Alright, are we, are we good Quinn? Okay, alright, we've just come out of closed session. We will now reconvene with our regular Grand County Commission meeting. Actually, we will, I'll, yeah, Thompson. I'll suspend our Grand County Commission meeting and we'll move to, on to our Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Board Meeting. It is four thirty-seven. Present are all the, all the commissioners as were here previously, as well as our county administrator. Our first order of business with Thompson is citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens to be heard regarding Thompson or the, or the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District? Anyone online? Alright, doesn't look like there's any citizens to be heard. We're now, we have no general reports, so we're up to our consent agenda. Item one is approval of meeting minutes from the September seventeenth TSSSFD meeting that are in our agenda and item two is the approval of Thompson bills. Those bills are in the amount of eight hundred thirty-eight dollars fifty-eight cents payroll and the amount of one thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars and forty-eight cents for combined bills and payroll, the amount of two thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars six cents. Move to approve as read. Thank you, Mike. Alright, motion by Commissioner McCurdy, second by Commissioner Walker to approve the consent agenda as read. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands and that passes unanimously. Alright, yeah, we're now under our chief's report and I don't think we got one from Chief Markham. Okay, so it looks like we will, we don't have a chief's report today, so we will wait for that until the next Thompson Springs meeting. We have no new or old business, future considerations, public hearings or closed sessions. So at this point, I will adjourn our regular Thompson Springs meeting at four thirty-eight. Alright, we will now move back to our regular Grand County Commission meeting and we will start as always with our pledge of allegiance. All rise, please. Alright, we'll now move on to our regular citizens to be heard session. This is our normal four o'clock, usually at four o'clock citizens to be heard session. Anyone here to make comment? Hi, welcome Katie. Please start by introducing yourself.
Katie Murphy, speaking in my capacity as a citizen of Grand County and also as a former AmeriCorps vista in the planning department. Just wanted to speak a little bit about the flat grant and I know that there's four options on the table for areas that we could apply for money for the flat grant. I know we're looking at King Creek Boulevard, Sand Flats, the Spanish Valley Bike Path and also Calcitin. I wanted to speak on behalf of the Spanish Valley Bike Path. I spoke with Dan Stenta this morning and just wanted to hear his perspective on how likely it is that we would be able to get money from the flat grant for the Spanish Valley Bike Path. It sounds like it is not a common, it does not fit into the sort of common recipients of flat grant money. It would be a little bit of a stretch. That said, I think it is by far the most beneficial to our community of any of the options on the table. I know that there are many, many, many other people that would agree with that. And so just wanted to put my two cents in for that and that it might be worth just trying. I know we've applied for the flat grant for King Creek Boulevard in the past. We've applied for it for sand flats in the past or we've applied for the raise grant for sand flats in the past. I also processed all of the public information on the raise grant application for sand flats and I read through all of the public opinion. It is very divided and there are, there are plenty of people who would really, really, really love for, you know, all of sand flats to be paved and there's a lot of people who are very against it. So just wanted to put that out there. I do think that if we are considering paving sand flats road, we have to think about why we're really doing it, which is to save money. I think that in the sort of public information process, there was a lot of sort of framing it as it is. It would be beneficial to pave the, pave sand flats and also to build a bike path because it's going to improve bicycle safety. Paving sand flats is not going to improve bicycle safety. It's going to make everyone go faster. It's gonna, i- if we do pave sand flats, there needs to be a separated bike path to save the bicyclists from the paved path. It's going to increase usage. A lot of people were writing about over-usage of the, of the road, over-usage of, you know, just all the areas that are accessed by sand flats. And I think we're definitely in an induced demand scenario. If we pave that road, that's going to happen. So absolutely, there needs to be not just a bike lane, but a separated bike path. And I think we need to just make sure we're paying attention to cause and effect here. Paving sand flats road is not to improve bicycle safety. It's to, you know, save money, which is a good reason. But we are spending a lot of money on maintaining the road, so it's worth considering that. But I just wanted to, as somebody who like spent hours poring through all the public opinion on that, I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was expressed and that I was speaking for the people whose opinions I was reading and that. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Alright, is there anyone on Zoom who is here to make public comment? Okay, alright, we will have another public comment period at six o'clock. Okay, we will move on. We don't have any presentations we've already had or we've had our department reports. We have an agency reports, so we will now go on with our general reports. And how about you, Mike, you want to start today? Actually, I'm sorry, I missed the commission member disclosures. Anybody have anything to disclose first? Anything on the agenda? Okay, looks like none. So Mike?
Attended the Mill Creek Workshop meeting with Evan. Spoke about a lot of the topics that the studiers actually looked over. Our topic number one was, I'm trying to see, the FMA web detention basin scoping grant, number one, was heavily on, I mean, a lot of people's minds there and quite talked about topic. But there were seven topics listed. Let Evan go over the topics that were decided because I can't remember. But it was a good meeting. It's just looking where mostly the city was looking at trying to stop Mill Creek flooding and the canyons surrounding. So, but it was, thank you for letting me attend the people that day. But I really am interested in number topic or our general business number one. Grand County Transportation Special Service District on October eighth voted to approve the only applicant for, and I want to state that positions are still open if anyone wants to fill that. We, as, as the special, special service district voted Josh Green to appoint Josh Green. I will have updates on more stormwater mitigation projects from them. They heard the commission's voice, Kevin's voice, pretty loud and clear on that stormwater is a number one top or is a top priority for the community and especially while now it's on everyone's mind. They understand that they wanted the commission to understand that they could obviously take on more. It's beholding on more funding. So if they get more funding, they can take on more stormwater mitigation projects themselves without much county input on that. They, they wanted to outright approve. There's some, we're just looking over some legalities there on Bill's initiative of the 25K for the stoplight at Mill Creek, Kanagie Boulevard. They want to chip in, they're just seeing if they can, make sure if it's okay on that one. And again, they're looking, the district is looking for reopening or facilitating, facilitating conversations on the Pat Creek retention basin or Pat Creek flooding and mitigation in general. They will be reaching out to our neighboring San Juan County, but that again directly affects everyone in Grand County as it's elevation, water goes downhill. We will be working, working with San Juan County on all points of that. They've already reached out, they've already reached out to Dan Stenta to see where we're at or just the overall plans for stormwater mitigation on Pat Creek as the city's taking on, I mean, heavily Mill Creek. So, next, we'll be working with CGCC on updates to this. We need to update the strategic plans. That call came down from state and US to get an updated strategic plan for the CGCC and what we've been doing and where we're going in the near, nearer future. Grand County Recreation Special Service District Meeting is tomorrow. Trish will be attending for me and that's actually it for me.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I had a big week.
Yeah, that's great.
No, no apologies necessary. Alright, Kevin?
I turned it, actually I may have mentioned this last meeting, the big fire meeting that Bill helped put together. I think it was a good discussion, though I think a lot of us got sick at that meeting. So, better now. Uh, let's see, and I think we've got, we'll be discussing that in the future. You know, it's just, there's a lot of details to be settled about, you know, transferring the district and I, Bill to say. There participated in some talks along with Steven with the, the state auditor. That's still, they now have a, they asked to see a draft of our letter before we made it official. So they're reviewing that now. Excuse me?
There you go.
There you go.
Oh, sorry. So, yeah, so we're waiting your back from them. Once we do, then we can officially approve the letter and hopefully get everything resolved. But, you know, we're still, I think there, you know, there were productive discussions, but it's not, there's no done deal at this point. So, and, and then there were budget advisory board meetings, but that will, starting in November, you know, we'll be hearing all about that. That's all I have to report.
Okay, great, Kevin. Trish?
I just had one meeting because I took a week off and went hunting. So we, I met with a few individuals with Headwaters Economics. What's kind of interesting is they have free services that deal with specifically, we talked about the community planning assistance for wildfire. It's called CPAW. They're free services where they'll work with your, with land use planning, mapping, eating with any grants within that interface. So it was, it was an interesting discussion. It's kind of amazing the services they, that they provide. At this point, I've kind of shifted that on to Amy within planning and zoning to kind of move forward with, with working with Headwaters and CPAW. And that's it.
Alright, awesome. Bill?
Just want to clarify real quick, the county voted on the stoplight for Edgy Boulevard for fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Fifty, that's my bill.
Okay.
Department is considering twenty-five thousand, although I just don't want it to be understood. There is the full fifty that we've got to find out where that thing will come from. And then on Kevin's comments about Monat Valley Fire, I'm actually, I don't think I'm any more up to date. I think we're kind of waiting on some information for that item number thirteen. Sounds like maybe Steven is involved in that, so we're still stuck. But I think on some of that land transfer stuff, so I'm still in the dark for that.
Okay.
That meeting with the state, I will agree, was good and it helped to work out a lot of the, I don't know if it's differences, but a lot of the planning that has to go into this with so many different entities because there were a lot of people and they've all got their fingers in each other. All it does is clearly complicate it in my mind. But I was at the same Headwater Economics meeting with Trish. I think it's really, that's some value as far as Castle Valley, definitely with the wildfire side of things. I'm not convinced that it's something maybe for the entire county, but I can see value in it. Castle Valley could gain some fire knowledge out there. What I was a little disappointed in is it didn't look like they had the bandwidth to take on the flood mitigation. And I personally think both county-wide and Castle Valley, the flood mitigation is of a higher priority. But that was just my personal meeting, personal feelings coming out of that. Budget advisory board meetings, we have had a couple of those. Also had an airport board meeting with Tammy, I do see is on there. And I don't know if there's any way to move her item up because she is pretty far down the chain. If we get to it, it might be inefficient to let her go about her life. I was also part of the Utah Waterships Council meeting that I'm a representative to Trish's, the co-chair on that meeting and there were multiple reports from different groups around the state and nothing regarding our corner of the state down there. Say that probably is it.
Great. Alright, Evan?
I'm going to work backwards. So this morning I attended the EMS Special Service District Meeting. There was not a formal adoption of a tentative budget, but we had kind of some presentations around kind of budgeting strategies and just kind of some head nods around there. And I think there's a, a few different budgets models out there and the big kind of question mark between them is TRT funding. And, you know, I had kind of explained to, you know, how we often push all our chips into the sheriff's office so that we can kind of point to it and be like, that's where all the money went. And that obviously the sheriff doesn't have other funding besides property tax. But it is a big question mark for EMS about, they had made their request during their sales tax presentation about some funding there. And so obviously they'd be very appreciative if that stuff came through. So that was kind of the, the message to carry back from that meeting, I think. Their call volume has started to drop off in the last couple of years, not drastically, but I think just kind of some of the other post-COVID normalizing we've seen in other indicators. Their call volumes are still above twenty nineteen levels, but have kind of dropped since twenty twenty. So, and let's see, I met with the health districts. We did have more of a budget presented there. It will, we'll vote once again to kind of adopt. We made some edits to it, there were some discussions around that. And so those edits will be made and then presented and we'll have a formal adoption of a tentative budget before a hearing. And so that will all kind of be coming at the end of the year. And we had a great presentation from the Free Healthcare, Free Health Clinic and some of the progress they've made in their new space and some of their new offerings. And the amount of community members that they're serving is skyrocketing. And so that's really nice to see that and people being able to take advantage of that. And the district made a commitment to continue to, or just kind of gave them the verbal agreement that they will be included, a donation to them will be included in next year's budget. Similar to Terry District took a month off to kind of, they're working on their budgets as well and there just wasn't a lot of business besides that. And so we'll meet next month to kind of finalize those. I appreciate the intro from Mike. I was trying to pull up some of those options. They kind of presented about ten different options of ways to address flooding specifically in the Mill Creek drainage. So it's separate from all the Pat Creek stuff that Mike was mentioning. The most popular is the large detention basin in the canyon. So actually above where the old power dam is, building a new bigger dam basin. I don't, it's, this is very, very early, I don't want to like sound the alarms. But that's, that's a popular thing that's, that's being looked at also as well as channel expansion. So basically widening the channel, giving it rooms to flow out there at some key spots through town. So all of these, like I was saying, is very early. And so the, the point of the meeting was to kind of get feedback on which options they should explore. And so some other options were ordinances. So just basically it would be us restricting what can be built, you know, in what areas as a way to avoid future harm and damage to people and structures. There was also a talk of replacing structures, a detention basin outside of the canyon. That ran into a lot of like private property issues, so some pretty high expenses as well as some engineering challenges because you would, there's a belief you quickly hit groundwater by going down. So you'd need like a very wide footprint. And it would need to run a long distance because there's not a big pitch there. So whatever you kind of pull out of the main channel would eventually go back into the main channel anyway. There was talk of floodproofing, some of the commercial zones, the kind of higher steps, you know, so water's not going under doors. Property buyouts, another kind of expensive option. Another one that I think was interesting to me was there was talk of deepening the channel and the way that you would achieve that is by building levees. And so it would actually, you wouldn't be like trenching the channel, you'd be raising the side of the channels up. And in order for those levees to be effective, they need to run a long distance. And one of the downfalls of that is it prevents other things from flowing into the channel. So all the like cheating and any kind of flooding coming off the hillside would then not be able to go into the creek because of these new levees. And then they had a pretty wide footprint in order to be able to slow up to a high point, slow down. You wouldn't be able to plant trees in there, you know, they would be kind of like engineering products. So going into the meeting, it was ranking pretty high for me. And then once I got a better understanding of what it would actually look like on the ground, it definitely came down a few notches. And then just some of the other options that didn't get a lot of support were just kind of raising structures, suspending money on just kind of gaining elevation and flood impact areas. And doing nothing, which was the cheapest option, but not very popular. So it was a very low ranking. And I think that's all I got since the last.
Great, Mike?
And only one thing to add, as we were both there, when Evan spoke of detention basins, this is not only water, but it was debris, green basins. That was the conversation on all points. Yeah, so there's, it adds a lot of management, you know, because it.
Scoop them out after every.
Yeah. One thing I, I meant to bring this up during Bill's presentation, I forgot. But they were looking for feedback on other projects that might be happening in the Mill Creek corridor. Because they didn't want to get too far along and then somebody else would be like, you know, and so we had brought up the kind of recreation parking kind of plan that was floating around. But I didn't want to forget any other kind of plans or projects or proposals that are in motion underway. So if you guys know of any, any of these other bodies, rather get everything on the table sooner and upset folks.
Alright, Mary?
Yes, I had a housing task force meeting and we have fifty-one vouchers out. That includes four veterans, which is nice because there was a time period where Grand County wasn't getting any vouchers for veterans because our veterans are served out of Colorado rather than Utah. And they were sending all the vouchers to Colorado veterans. Took some effort and I really thank John Curtis, our representative. He helped a lot on making sure our veterans in Grand County got some vouchers. So that was, I just to remind, remember in the past that things have improved. The Virginian has three vacancies, however, there are thirty-one people on the waiting list. Royal Crossing is closing on nine new homes. And it looks like, look, looking at the updating mission and, oh, I forgot one. The Wingate Phase Two are now working on landscaping or their construction is pretty much completed. The Housing Task Force is going to look closely at its mission and its goals to see if the, what we're working on is matching and if we need to change our mission and change in any other direction. So that's what they're looking at. I also had a travel council board meeting and they were just talking about the, the effect of the new parking on Center Street and how, you know, some of the tweaks and things that are going to, there might have to be some tweaking on, on how things are going to accommodate larger trucks and buses. But most, you know, a lot of it is very positive that's going on. The big Kane Creek project, Kane Creek development, but the road itself is moving, but it's slow because it's so huge because they're undoing everything underneath. So, you know, the sewers and the water lines and everything else. So it's going slow, but it is moving on. The visitation is up. And they are cautiously optimistic. They feel real good about how things are moving up. We will be talking about the grants later on, so I won't go into that. I found one of the most interesting parts of the meeting was they discussed the difference in what foreign tourists are looking at when they choose to come to the United States. And for instance, European people are looking at value for family safety. It's a safe vacation for their family. They are really interested in sustainability in tourism. That's a big deal to them. So they want to go to places that are very conscious of sustainability and they like to book way far ahead. A UK, they really go for what's the greatest value. That seems to be their, their pushing point. India wants tourists to repeat and they like a great travel model. They like, you know, they tend to join tours and buses, such as given tours. And it's a great place to be going to because it's the largest, the increase of middle class. The other thing they look at is food offerings. So really interesting experimenting with various foods.
You're saying India is a great place to advertise to because their middle class is really.
They're, they're starting to trend. So they're getting enough money that the middle class has said, hey, let's take a foreign vacation.
There's one point four billion of them.
There's a lot of them, yes. China loves our national parks and people from Canada like to come here in the winter, like to come down, get out of the cold. And they are very influenced by exchange, the money exchange and by our politics, what's going on politically. Austria, Australia likes Las Vegas. And what was common with all of them was they're all very interested in dark skies. They really like to go to places where they can see the dark skies. The rest of the meeting will be discussed later, so I won't go into any of that. The other meeting I attended with Mike and Evan on the flooding. And the only thing I wanted to add, you guys did a great job, great job, was that when I went into the meeting, I was completely like really not liking the idea of the detention or the dam on Mill Creek. But it's not what you traditionally think of as a dam. It's not going to hold water. It's not going to be a kids' lake. It's not going to hold water. It will run normally except during floods. And I don't exactly understand how that works. But then still, the consequence of a flood and what holding that water back is going to do to the immediate area will, you know, be substantial. We'll have to look at that. All of the, and I think that one of the biggest takeaway that we looked at is maybe a lot of it is looking at a variety of solutions. a lot of it is looking at a variety of solutions, that there is a silver bullet. That, you know, maybe there are areas that we raise the buildings. Maybe there is an area we levy, you know, maybe there is an area, you know, you know, that we buy out, you know, that uh, we wanted to we knew, you know, the takeaway from the meeting is I felt a lot of it was there was not a simple solution as we all knew. And all of them have drawbacks and looking at, instead of just one solution, looking at a variety.
Yeah.
So that's, I think, I've gone everything.
Okay, great. And I also, I attended the uh, fire meeting with the state that Bill and Kevin referenced earlier. I also attended the Headwaters Economic uh, meeting that Trish and Bill talked about. And the only thing I had to add, yeah, Bill brought up the floodwater, which, which is interesting and it would be really helpful. We did, there are different departments in, in Headwaters Economics. We talked to the fire person and it was their opinion that, that the floodwater department was, was very backed up. And I think that's what Bill was referring to when it, when they, it's sounds like they don't have the capacity, but we didn't actually talk to those folks. And it might be worth getting ahold of them and maybe getting in line or, or whatever you need to do because it, it does seem like it could be a pretty useful um, uh, organization to, to help us work out our flooding problems. Um, but that was a good meeting and it is interesting what those, what those people can offer communities. It's, it's uh, yeah, it's actually really cool. Um, I also attended a uh, meeting with uh, along with our engineer and a couple of folks from the city and planning uh, to talk about the uh, Mob Canyon Pathway Extension um, from the Brands Trail uh, up to Utah Raptor State Park. And we talked about the, the crux of that is getting back over the highway. Or if it stays on the east side of the highway from the Mob Brands Trailhead and just goes north to Utah Raptor State Park, getting across Seven Mile Wash, because they'd have to widen that bridge there if they were going to utilize that part of the bridge. So that's kind of the, the crux of that construction project. And we looked at various maps and uh, the places that, that, that uh, pathway could be extended. But it is, it is going to be, it is, they are going to work on it. I think they have close to nine million dollars appropriated for it. So it's um, it's, it's going to happen. It's just, just a matter of where and when, hopefully sooner than later. Um, also attended uh, Trail Mix and the main focus of that meeting was to talk about the BLM scoping period for taking e-bike comment. Uh, Trail Mix worked. We talked for about an hour on, on coming up with the uh, letter that Trail Mix would write concerning the e-bikes and came to some more or less uh, um, agreement. Uh, and a letter's been drafted and that will be voted on at the next meeting, which puts us outside of the scoping period time. But um, talking to folks at the BLM, it sounds like since we are a cooperating agency, that we would be able to submit that letter late. I think they're also waiting to hear, or we're waiting to hear uh, comments from the Motorized Trail Committee meeting as well, because they'll uh, obviously have comment on that also. So we should probably be getting a letter from both those organizations uh, next month. Um, I attended a TSSD meeting to uh, the main topic of that was the, talking about what they've um, contracted with Jones and Mill to do the hydrology study that this commission, um, we, we uh, gave them some of our discretionary funds to go ahead and do that. Uh, so we had uh, some engineers from Jones and Mill online at the meeting and it looks like they were looking at areas around the Old Spring. Uh, the Old Spring Flow is not awesome right now. And the preliminary studies, they haven't done the entire study yet. They haven't drilled a test site, but they're estimating roughly a fifty-fifty chance of coming up with a um, maybe a fifteen to twenty gallon per minute well in the vicinity. And, and this is just, this is just what they're kind of, after looking at the preliminary data, walking around out there, doing site visits and stuff. Um, and they'd want to hit water within the first uh, six hundred feet because after that you get down to the mainco shale. There's no water there. You'd have to go another over a thousand feet to get to anything. So, and that would be prohibitively expensive for TSSD. So it's, it's not good news and it's not bad news. It's kind of maybe what was expected. There, there could be uh, a chance of, of them finding water out there. Nothing, nothing crazy, but, but I mean, even an additional twenty gallons per minute for Thompson would be a big deal.
Yeah, I did, um, just kind of in a site, but I think it's relevant to them is I, I was out at the, at the ranch in Hay Canyon and we were talking about their wells. They have two wells that are not very deep.
Yeah.
But they're basically hitting that stream bed, right? So they do have perennial water that flows through there. So their, their wells are only about fifty feet deep.
Yeah.
But they did hit that water and they, they get exactly about that.
They do, yeah. And what they were really hoping for is to hit something within a hundred and fifty feet. Right? It'd be ideal. It'd be way less expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, actually probably better quality too.
Yep.
Then the other thing that TSSD talked about that we did, we did look at the budget. We, we did come up with a tentative budget for uh, Thompson. And there will be, our, the budget hearing is set for November thirteenth, six o'clock. So uh, they're moving forward. That's kind of a record for Thompson, November. Um, and that's all I had. Uh, yes, Bill.
Just an update on the e-bike. The deadline has been moved to eight.
Okay, that's official, yeah.
That follows, that is official, follows David Powell when they communicated that to me sort of.
Yeah.
Follows our meeting because the Motorized Trail Committee did want to participate.
And there, they weren't going to comment until that meeting, but and, and also to clarify, uh, yeah, Carrie thought that they were going to do that. I hadn't heard that they definitely were. But so the Motorized Trail Committee meeting and Trail Mixer Advisory Committees to this uh, commission. And so they will, both those two committees will work on their letters about the e-bike scoping, submit them to us. And then it would fall to us to, to pass something or to, to look at those letters and distill them into something that we wanted to submit at our uh, second meeting in November. Okay, cool. Thanks, Bill. Um, all right. I think that's it for me. Is, let's see, it looks like Stephen is online. Stephen, did you want to, do you have a report for us today?
Sure. Just a super brief report. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Um, I had the opportunity to attend uh, Sim Gill, the DA for uh, Salt Lake County invited me up uh, to attend a National Best Practices Conference with uh, prosecution throughout the, the country. And it was a great conference. Um, appreciated him extending that invitation to me. Uh, tomorrow we have the UPC Civil Conference tomorrow. It's hosted in Moab, which is excellent. I'm going to be attending that. Uh, one additional thing, and I'm going to turn off my volume. Give me one second. Sorry, I'm, I'm still in court multitasking. So one more thing, I had the opportunity to speak with um, Jacques this weekend about trying to get consistency on having items have legal review. Um, it's been a, a topic that's been something that I think the bane of the attorney's existence dating back to Ms. Sloan's days. Uh, we had some good conversations. I, I know the commission likely will see the agenda have been, have been shifted from uh, from what they saw last week. And that was because uh, we didn't get information sent over to my office. When department heads or people that put things on the agenda don't provide those to my office. It creates quite a bit of headache, uh, creates a bit of difficulty and it, it removes the ability for me to see it. So I'm really looking forward to having some consistency and some problem solving. I really want to thank Jacques and, and Quinn for reaching out and kind of trying to find some, some solution to this continuous problem. And I know the commission would likely rather have uh, us, us three figure it out than the commission continue to hear about it. But it continues to be something that we need to uh, resolve and fix. And so that's why there are some things that the commission uh, won't be deciding tonight. And I look forward to, to finding some solutions on that end. So that's everything I have.
All right. Great, Stephen. Thanks. Yeah. And, and appreciate uh, your openness to working on the weekend over that as well. Um, all right, uh, Gabe is not with us. I don't, is Jameson doesn't look like he is prepared to do a report today. So we would move on to our administrator report. Uh, Quinn.
I went to a bunch of the same meetings you guys did. Um, also a lot of department head interactions. Just day-to-day county business. I don't know if I have anything super relevant to bring up other than, yeah, I appreciate Stephen's help too on rearranging some of that agenda stuff. So thank you, Jacques, too.
Great. All right, thanks. Uh, okay, we're done with our general reports. So we will move on to our general business action items. And our first order business is the twenty-twenty-two FMA Moab Detention Basin Scoping Grant. Uh, this is, I think that has something to do with what, what you guys references with the, referenced with the, with the meeting on the flooding at the city. And presenting this is Richard Laurie uh, from the city who's here with us today, uh, who's also the uh, grant writer for the city of Moab. Uh, welcome, Richard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, yeah. So trans accordion grant writer. Uh, when I first joined this, uh, immediately after my AmeriCorps decision, this uh, Mill Creek flooded in twenty-twenty-two and everybody's scrambling to figure out uh, how to start mitigating this stuff. So we looked into some FEMA funding. You guys probably know the acronym BRIC, uh, has a cousin, FMA, Flood Mitigation Assistance. We went for that, but we had not adopted twenty-eighteen as mitigation plan at the time. Uh, so we had a letter of support drafted and that you all, I believe, reviewed and Jacques signed that said that we could apply for the FMA under Grand County. So we're a sub-applicant to Grand County who is technically a sub-applicant to the Division of Emergency Management, who's the actual applicant to FEMA. So, yeah, we're just ready to move forward on it now. FEMA took quite a long time. So they awarded it sometime beginning of twenty-twenty-three, but it, it took quite a while to get here. Um, yeah, so it's just uh, I need a couple of things for, I think, Jacques to, to sign and then get going on. Since it's a, it's relatively large federal grant, we're going to have to do a RFP and everything. So just get started on that soon. Um, yeah, if you guys have any questions or.
Great, uh, Mike.
Get your hand up for.
I got it. Uh, I'd like to make a motion. I'd move to approve the twenty-twenty-two FMA Moab Detention Basin Scoping Grant.
I'll second that. Got you, Mary.
Oh.
All right, any uh, let's see, any discussion or questions for Richard? So what exactly does this grant fund? Is it like?
It's only project scoping. So the ultimate goal at the end would be to get a hundred percent designs and a FEMA benefit cost analysis done so that way in the future. If there is a project that we desire to go for, we can apply for FEMA again for that. So what this will do is, as you guys all mentioned, you guys really led into this perfectly. Uh, there's multiple ideas floating around. It's either in the canyon or there's private property. But as Evan said, there, there are issues with private property. So what this project is going to be doing is an alternatives analysis, kind of figuring out what the best approach would be, then doing public engagement. And uh, yeah, ultimately, we'll hopefully a hundred percent designs.
And then how, how is the decision made about which option to pursue? Is that like a Moab City decision or?
Oh, I believe it will involve you guys and probably BLM as well. I believe it's on BLM and technically something like that.
Yeah, it was said at the meeting too. It was BLM also. So I'm, I'm sure there'll be I have the technical aspect of that part, but I, I don't think it'll just be Moab making this soon.
I g- I guess I'm just trying to figure out if, if voting to be the pastor of this grant, are we endorsing any particular options or just saying, actually looking at all options?
Yeah, it's not, no.
Yeah, we have not moved forward with any favorite item yet, just scope.
But this is slightly separate from the Bowen and Collins, the meeting that we were discussing.
So that was a completely separate thing. And they actually independently of what this grant was, which I wrote in twenty-twenty-two, also recommends a detention basin because again, like really it's the slowing things down because all this water is originating from the mountains. It's being funneled to the canyon. It's moving pretty quickly right as it enters Moab. And then there's also a lot of debris. Especially if you have wildfires projected to increase over time. I think you can imagine that debris won't be stopping anytime soon. So uh, Bowen Collins independently had suggested that a detention basin could be one of the most effective routes.
And uh, Bowen and Collins, it's not that they took it off the board of decisions. It's just they knew that this was already existing. So they, so they asked everyone present to actually point other than this topic, uh, what they can uh, scope as the best idea uh, to help with flooding. They didn't take it off the bo- uh, the board decisions. But they did say, hey, what else can we look at? Because we know Moab City is going after this grant or that we were going after this grant already. So to Kevin's question, it's not so much an endorsement as much as uh, what are we actually discussing here? What's the plan? You know, are we talking about thirty-foot dam? We talked about sixty-foot dam?
Oh, that's all. No idea. That's all.
But I mean, that's what, what, what we're talking about tonight is like, let's approve uh, but scope, uh, what, what would the project look like?
Yeah, the investigation of a preferred path forward.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
And then also you're approving to allow, so I, I'll be drafting all the reimbursement requests, all the reports, sending it to uh, Gabe and his team to then send to people or send to. So hopefully you guys just have to review everything and check it off, sign it, and then I'll, I'll try to call the label.
Yes, but this does pass through the county. We are the pastor for this.
And we'll submit invoices to you guys to get those funds.
Okay. Anyone else have a, yeah, Mary?
I just wanted to say this is another example of the county and the city working together. That's just what I was going to say, you know. The last time we passed an MOU to work with the city and today we're going to. So yes, I, we do work with the city.
Yes.
We'd like to work closer.
All right. So I have a motion uh, from Mike and a second from Trish, I believe, to approve all those favor of the motion. Raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. Great. Thanks, Richard.
Thank you.
Of course. Actually, while I'm here, I've got a couple more things just to remind everybody about. There should be a Safe Streets for All Grant. That's another cooperative effort between city and county. Uh, there should be an ILA out. I'm not sure when that was going to get on the agenda, but there should be an ILA uh, out there floating around in a resolution.
Okay.
Um, and then also transit, uh, we're about to be moving into the non-peak season. So we're going to be reducing the hours to the normal non-peak season hours. So nine to five, Monday through Friday. Uh, and no fixed route. It's only microtransit. And that lasts until March. It begins tomorrow, lasts until March. And then I'm thinking like I haven't actually reported to you guys on the transit at all. And maybe before next peak season when potentially we'll have more alterations to the service. If anything comes up, I can present how this service has benefited Grand County because we have data.
Yeah, it would be great to have a presentation on that. We can uh, we can touch base um, yeah, in, in a, in a month or two. Over the winter time, there's plenty of opportunity to, to present on something like that. So yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
You're welcome.
All right. We're on to, let's see, agenda item two, special events grants. Uh, this one is Ben presenting. Uh, uh, Ben Alter presenting, I guess I should say. We have two Bens from Economic Development here. Um, and I think uh, with some of what Stephen alluded to earlier, it looks like all of these grants, except for the um, one concerning the uh, upcoming POWAW, which I think is next weekend, we are going to kick them back to the next meeting. Uh, pending uh, attorney, attorney review. So those will be back at our, at our uh, November sixth meeting. And we will be discussing the POWAW grant uh, tonight because that is extremely timely. Great. Thank you, Jacques. Good to see you all again. Let's move the table forward, feel closer to you all. So um, as Jacques mentioned, um, these uh, grant applications uh, were put forth a little prematurely on the agenda. So they have been bumped until the attorney can properly review them. So hopefully we'll be talking about this, the sixth of November, I believe.
Yes, that's right.
Uh, so tonight before you all, I'm asking for a review of the Red Canyon POWAW application. Um, the Travel Council Advisory Board's recommendation for funding is included in your agenda summary. And that is to the tune of four thousand four hundred seventy-five. I would like to provide some context on that number. As you can see, it's a little less than a third of the POWAW's uh, request for funding. Um, what happened was we were unable to review that grant application request in a timely manner. Unfortunately, it slipped through at some point and we were able to catch it. We are now coming up on the event. And we had a, uh, we had exactly four thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars left in that funding pool. So the Travel Council Advisory Board specifically advised that those funds be allocated to the, this potential awardee and that the commission consider providing further funds potentially up to their request. That is of course to the discretion of this body. So I'm glad to provide any context information on the POWAW this year and things we've learned from the POWAW in previous years. They have been grant recipients before. So we do have some good impact reports. And I can talk a bit about what we think will be the impact value of the POWAW this year. But this is the only event grant for you tonight. Great. Thanks, Ben. Uh, Bill?
Yeah, I moved to approve the Red Canyon POWAW Grant for four thousand four hundred. Yeah, I moved to approve the Red Canyon POWW grant for $4,475.
Second from Mike, okay. And then Ben mentioned that, so, so their ask, the POWW's original ask was 15, is that correct? $15,000?
Correct.
And that is also what they received last year, right?
I believe so. I need to take a look here. For that point also, liking kind, how could, how can we help? I know we don't have the money to grant to them on that being the last part, but how in liking kind can OSTA help facilitate the POWW in staffing needs for us picking up the? How, how do we?
Sure.
How do we get there?
My understanding of the POWW is that it relies very much on volunteer labor. They, of course, have vendors there and they have lots of booths set up so folks can spend and connect more with the culture they are seeing. But in terms of the event itself, it relies heavily on volunteer labor. I don't know that OSTA could give more than they could and that feels a little bit outside my realm, but I love where your head's at. And in terms of, was there another question? I'm sorry, did you have something else? Who's that?
I guess, I guess my point was just that you had talked about if coming out of the, the Travel Council meeting, they were wondering if there's any other ways that the commission could help to facilitate them, us like making up the money to get to where the POWW needed to be as far as an event's granted.
Sure, I see Kevin has a point.
Yeah, go ahead, Kevin.
Actually, yeah, so just for clarification and a question or suggestion. So just to make sure I understand correctly, we, we budgeted for a certain amount for grants in this category. Those went before the TCAP, but through, but in, you know, because of staff error or something like that, the POWW grant was not on the list initially. So almost all the money got allocated to the other applicants. And then af- after the fact, their, their application was discovered and there was $4,475 left. And so they said, okay, let's just give up the rest. They didn't want to go back and adjust all the dollars.
Yeah, oh, that's exactly correct. Thank you for that context. Understandably, they did not want to go back and mess with other allocations that they had recommended.
So, so it seems to me, one, one option we have, I mean, I, I wouldn't want to, you know, make a habit of this, but, you know, something unusual happened this year and we could just increase the pool for the grants and give them, you know, the same thing they got last year, which, you know, to me makes sense. I, I think, you know, I, I think we have the budget to do it. I don't think there's any obvious negative effects of doing that and it, it just seems like, you know, playing, playing fair with, with the applicants. I just wanted to throw that idea out there.
Where is this funding source coming from for these grants?
So this is from our TRT promotion funds. It's one line item of many line items within our budget. And this is specifically for special event grants. The special event grant program has existed. It well predates me and the original purpose of it, which is still maintained with the Travel Council advising on the awards, is to see new and exciting events that potentially bring in visitors, be propped up and supported. There was language in the past and I don't think this is included in the special event grant anymore, but language previously discussed that around the three-year mark of funding, we would be looking for events to show they're becoming more financially independent. If awarded, this would be the POWW's third year of funding from this program.
If we increase this money as we're suggesting here possibly, where is that gonna come from? Or is that coming out of these others that they've already budgeted? Or how are we gonna make that up?
But my, my suggestion was that it would just come out of our reserve TRT funds. It would not affect any of the other grants.
And we have reserves that we...
Yes.
My, yeah, my discussions that have been very preliminary with Jacques and Quinn sound like it could easily take the form of a budget amendment take from another budget line item in our TRT promotion dollars.
And we'd be talking, so, so if their ask is 15, then we'd be talking basically 10,000. So I think originally for 2024, this was budgeted at just this line item. Correct me if I'm wrong, guys, 77,500. So if we were to do, just for example, this, it would take that, we'd have to amend that budget up to 87,500, roughly.
So if, if I understand Kevin correctly, he's saying we're gonna pull this out of some reserves somewhere and if I understand Quinn, we're taking and increasing this from where?
We would increase the budget at the end of the year for this line item from 77,000 to whatever the commission decides.
Right. I think it's typical that our, our budgeting never really hits the nail exactly on the head. And so as the year draws so close, some departments have said more, some less.
I think, I think I personally would be in favor of, of that line of attack. I think, I think this squarely, I mean, I've been to the POWW each of the last three years. It's, I think it's a great event. It definitely draws a ton of people into the county. I think most of the people in attendance are, are visitors and it's a, it's a cool, kind of unique cultural event in a, in a sea of running, biking and, and motorized events. It's, it's kind of a nice.
I think a relevant question is, if I may?
Yes.
Is, do you, have you guys identified anywhere in your budget that where there probably, you probably won't get to that level and there will be extra money? It's a question for Big Ben.
You're both pretty tall, just saying.
Thanks, Ben.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
I can amend my motion if you'd like.
Okay, that'd be...
For the full amount?
That'd be great, Bill. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll amend my motion that we fund the Red Canyon POWW for the full $15,000 and that we pull that funding and increase the budget for this line item overall. Is that sufficient?
I think so, yeah. I think that's, and Mike seconded.
Me too.
Okay. Great, yeah, thank you, Bill. And Mike, second, any further discussion or questions for?
I believe Stephen has a question.
Oh, Stephen, yeah. Sorry, I didn't...
I think it'd be important to make sure that any of the events that are receiving grants from the promotional line item that we highlight, underscore, really emphasize in what they're doing to do the promotion from outside because of the amount of scrutiny that we're getting. And if they're doing advertising outside the community, I think it's really easy for them to do that. And maybe they could just give us a, you know, a snapshot of the ad that they're putting in the advertiser or some sort of other documentation. I think that would be really beneficial and helpful for both them and us.
I would add, Stephen, I, I think that in, internal conversations that we've had, I think all of us have seen a desire to both bolster this program but make it better at the same time. And, and I think we've all kind of expressed some sort of small interest in seeing these events survive on their own and, and seeing the county or the public funds go to kind of new and unique events. So I think that in conjunction with economic development and the attorney's office, we'd like to kind of revamp this for next year, so.
Is that, oh, please go ahead.
Oh, no.
Oh, I was just gonna add that I was excited to help revamp this program when I was here last time, so I'm looking forward to working on it this time. And to Stephen's point, I think he makes a great point. I think that our post-grant impact reporting, which is required of all awardees, is pretty robust. It does a great job in challenging the awardee to both qualify and quantify the impact as well as their marketing dollars. So we get to learn not just how our dollars are spent, but how they spent all their budget, how they market, whatnot. But in the, in, under the guise of trying to improve this program, if folks have suggestions of other things they want to see in that post-impact reporting to really understand our marketing dollars, I'd be more than happy. I think all of our awardees are happy to comply and show the effect.
And that's where my question was, or at least statement was gonna go directly, was that, that post-impact report 100%? I mean, it's to quantify this, I mean, head count coming through. We want to see how many people it's bringing in. I mean, I know it's not gonna be exact, but if I feel comfortable about throwing 15K at, at an event, yeah, then I really want to see how many people are coming in.
Yep, and that's a question we've been asking, but I'm happy to share those reports with you because I know that sometimes it doesn't make it to your desk, but absolutely.
Thank you.
Of course.
I guess I, I agree with what Stephen said and I think maybe if next year we could also, if, if we're not already doing so, we should, on the application before the event and before the place, you know, people should explain how it's gonna draw, you know, people into the county and that could be based on their past years or it could just be their marketing plan. But I, I think that's information we should have before the money's, or not after. But I mean, the post-grant report is good too.
Yep. All right. All right, great. I have a motion on the table. Bill made the motion and Mike seconded it to approve at the $15,000 price tag. So all in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Ben and Ben.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
All right. Okay. All right, we'll move on to Action Item Three, 2024 Property Tax Abatements and Cancellations through October 8th, 2024. And presenting is our treasurer, Chris Kaufman. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Jacques. I'll make sure everyone can hear me.
Very well.
Perfect. So we do this every year and you, I think you've all been through it at least once, so we'll move through pretty quickly. But my office accepts applications for property tax relief and abatement. My office also implements any tax cancellations that are needed and every year I bring these to you. I bring them to you this time of year because I'm sending my tax bills out and we try to get as many of these included before the tax bills go out. Anything that happens after this meeting, I will get approved usually in January at a, at a separate meeting. The total fiscal impact is about $472,000, of which 117K will be reimbursed by the state, leaving a final impact amount of about $354,000. I did want to mention that there was a substantial increase. If you look in your packet at the graph of the last five years, we had a pretty big jump up in the total tax relief this year. And it really wasn't due to a whole bunch of new applications. We, we had fairly similar amount of applications. So it really was due to individual applicants getting more tax relief. And to the best of my ability to figure it out, I think that's due in, in part to, to two main things. First is the, the new Moab City tax and second is the revaluation, not just in Castle Valley, but there was also revaluation sort of broader across the county. And when valuations go up and when a new tax is implemented, then residents are gonna see an increase in their taxes owed and that generally will lead to an increase in tax relief for people who are applying for that. And the reason for that is, is dependent on the different tax relief programs that we have. Some of them are based on the valuation of your properties. So when the valuation goes up, you're gonna get more through that program. Sometimes people aren't using all the tax relief that is available to them because they've, you know, taken their tax bill down to zero. Also, when their tax bill goes up, then they are using more of that tax relief that's available. So I think those are the reasons that we see that increase this year. I did want to mention that the fiscal impact is spread across all the taxing entities. This isn't just the county. And because abatements are factored into the tax rate through the tax collection rate, the, there really isn't a major impact on the taxing entities as far as the amount of tax revenue they receive. The main, the main impact of abatements and cancellations is to increase taxes for other taxpayers over time, which is generally a pretty small impact, given the total amount of taxes and the amount of abatements. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions about the cancellations and abatements. I did want to mention that in your packet is a detailed list of all the cancellations and the reasons for each of them.
Great, thank you, Chris. Kevin?
So Chris, I think, I think you just answered this, but I wanted to clarify. So when you say the fiscal impact is $350,000, that's spread amongst all entities, not just the county, is that correct?
Yeah, that would, that would be the, the, the amount of tax that, that I'm not collecting this year due to abatements and tax relief. And, yeah, that's primarily gonna impact the school district because they're about 66% or 70% now of the total tax. But, yeah, it's gonna be spread out across all the taxing entities roughly in proportion to their, you know, total tax amount that they receive.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Chris?
No, I'll make a motion.
Okay, Trish, that'd be great.
Chris, that was an excellent presentation, thank you. I moved to approve the 2024 Property Tax Relief and Cancellations through October 8th, 2024, as presented.
Thank you. All right, so I have a motion from Trish and a second from Kevin. Any further questions or comments for Chris? All right, so you know, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands and that passes unanimously. All right. Our next item, Item Four, Denial of Tax Relief Applications Through October 8th, 2024. And this is also our treasurer, Chris Kaufman.
Thanks again. So, yeah, unfortunately, we do occasionally have folks who apply for tax relief, but who don't meet the criteria to, to receive it. And when we do get those applications and they go through the full process of applying, we do have to formally deny those applications. And the state has recommended that the county commission in their capacity as the Board of Equalization should review those and deny them. So I'm, I bring them forward to you every year. Again, if we get any other applications that get denied, those will be presented to you in January. Because applications are protected documents and all the information in, in them is private, I have given these particular two applications that were denied to the commissioners individually and they're numbered one and two, so that if you have any questions about them, we can discuss them without talking about any of the specifics that might identify who is the applicant. But we do have two applications. The first one was simply over the income limit. And this was not just the state's income limit, but they were also over the county's income limit, which is 120% of the state limit. And I've got in the table here that shows they were over by about $1,200. The second applicant was applying for the blind abatement and per their ophthalmologist's report, their vision in the best eye did not meet the criteria for legal blindness, which is how you qualify for that abatement. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to take them on these two denied applications.
Any questions for Chris? Kevin?
I had a general question about the income limits. So it, is it, it's not based in at all? So if someone makes $1 over the limit, then they, they're out? They could be out, you know, $1,000 for that extra dollar of income, is that correct?
That is true. It, it's a little complicated because there are a bunch of different programs. So the circuit breaker, for instance, it does have a, an income bracket system. And as long as you do qualify, then the amount you receive off of your taxes goes up as your income goes down. But if you are over the limit, then you, you don't qualify. And, you know, the county did implement the 120% limit to sort of capture some of those folks who are just outside the state limit. But, yeah, if you are outside of that county limit, then, then it is, like you said, it's, it's very frustrating if someone is just a little bit over.
Is there any way we could write the county limits so that, you know, so that there isn't a cliff? You know, it's the, it's kind of a gradual drop house or? I mean, that's almost federal taxes work already, isn't it, Chris?
I mean, it, it is our resolution, it's our ordinance. So, yeah, we can, we can revisit that and adapt it any way, any way that we would like to. The state's limit is, is, is a very hard and fast one, but as far as what the county does above and beyond that, that's definitely within our control.
Chris, how many people do we have that are in between the state's limit and our limit? Is, is there, and what's your feeling as the treasurer? Do we need to increase our limit? Is, is there rationale for doing that or is there only a few people that are captured there?
No matter where you set a limit, there's always gonna be those folks who are, are just outside of it. I'm not sure exactly how many we had this year. A lot of times people will come and find out what the income limit is and then not apply. So, you know, that one denied application is certainly not indicative of how many people were outside the limit who, who inquired about property tax relief. The number of folks who we did help who were outside the state limit but within the county's limit, if you look back at the last agenda item and, and on the cancellation sheet, those are all together and it was about $18,000 worth. I'd say they were roughly about $1,000 each. So somewhere, I, I haven't counted them recently, but, yeah, somewhere around maybe 16 or 15 applicants, I would say.
Okay. Any other questions for Chris? Kevin?
I'm, I moved to approve the denial of tax relief applications numbered one and two for 2024, as presented. Thank you.
Second.
All right. I have a motion from Kevin and a second from Mary. Any other comment before I call for a vote?
I would just echo that I like the idea of in the future having the more...
the more staggered uh option available for
like a phased phased in kinda, yeah.
Wasn't wasn't that what you were just explaining, Chris? Maybe I misunderstood you, that if someone's income goes down, then their tax relief amount goes up, or it the the opposite would also occur as their income level goes up, then their amount of tax relief gets smaller.
So that is that is open to the state's circuit breaker um program. And uh like I mentioned, you get some money back um on the tax relief. Uh it's about a hundred and seventeen thousand this year that we're getting back from the state, and that is the circuit breaker program. And um when you qualify for that one, there is uh uh an income bracket, and we see which bracket you're in, and that determines how much tax relief you get. Um but there are other programs. There's the uh and there's the low income abatement, and uh that one is is sort of um what we based the county's program on, and they both work in a similar way, just with the different income limits. And those do not have a graduated um uh benefit. So it 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 does exist and it doesn't exist. It depends on which program, uh tax relief program you're looking at. Um but specifically the county's uh hundred and twenty percent of the state limit, that cancellation is not graduated.
Yes, so but it but it is within our power to to make it such this year at some point if we wanted to amend our resolution.
Okay, I was more speaking for next year before this comes up again.
Or next year, I mean, right. Okay, okay, so the motion uh table from Kevin, a second from Mary. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands, and that passes unanimously. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, next up is agenda item five, pretrial services grant application, and I will welcome uh Shan Hackwell, our jail commander from the Grand County Sheriff's Office. Hey, Shan.
So yeah, so I applied for this grant, uh this grant. We kind of discussed it in the CJ, CCI, get my CJs.
Justice League.
These days, because this is a CCJJ grant. Um either way, um we talked about it. We put it on our strategic plan for pretrial services. Um in order to, I don't know how, I guess I explained pretrial services. I don't know how depth you guys need to go. So pretrial services is basically somebody goes to jail, they haven't been sentenced yet. Uh what happens now is the judge signs a bail. Um they stay in jail or they bail out if they can bail out. A lot of these individuals that end up in jail could be released, but they're kind of that in-between stage where it should be probably bail, or they could get out if there was some kind of tracking or monitoring or anything like that. So the idea of the program is to get people out of jails that probably could be out um to save money for the counties or whatever else. Uh obviously, people are out of jail, not sitting in jail. Um so that's the idea behind pretrial services is to reduce the population of jails and so on. Uh obviously, this takes equipment, personnel, and so on. Uh I don't like stacking more stuff of deputies. We are, I have one deputy that my plan would be for this grant. It's basically copy and paste Kurt Brewer. Um he currently is court security, so he's the bailiff. He's the only bailiff. Uh he's drug court tracker, does transports, and he does paper service, which is a lot. So now if I add pretrial services, which a lot of counties are doing, they do their drug court trackers, and they just have two already. So they just add the pretrial services because it's pretty similar to drug court tracking anyways. Uh but I don't want to just add that on top of Kurt. Uh and I basically his backup, so I'm very short-handed in reports. I fill in. There's two of us. There needs to, I do it. Uh paper service deputies do it. Transports, Kurt does it when he has time between drug court tracking and everything else. And the idea behind this hopefully is if I create this other position, not it's not just supposed to be for pretrial services, that's what we're trying to get at. Um it's also to alleviate some of the transport. So if there's their tracking stuff for the day, there's port, we have mental health transports, deputies are on the road, are constantly doing it, which increases our overtime costs dramatically throughout the year for the sheriff's office. So the idea is also if we get this position, these guys can start picking up mental health transports as well if there's where I can that if that's the case. But hopefully the idea is to get this position, start the program, and cut some costs here and there with jail population cost for the sheriff's office, so. Um I've been waiting all year to find out. I keep getting asked in all the meetings with the judges and so on, if there's going to be funding in their position. Be sent, I believe, our strategic plan last year to this to see if there was going to be funding. I was told last minute that there might be funding. I didn't know who is providing the funding, so I just looked it up on the CCJJ. The grant was closed. I ended up calling them. They said it was supposed to be a competitive grant first, but they just want the program started. So they allowed me to reply. I applied, and they said pretty much they'll give us money if it's approved by you guys. And this basically, it's like you guys gotta understand, and they told me to express this to you, it's a one-time funding plus gap. So it's basically start your program. So I'm using it to pay at least one-year salary. That's not included in the goal because it hasn't been approved. Um so it's the one-year salary for a deputy, and I maxed it out where it maxed out, it's seven fifty. The one year on all pay. I did the one-year fee at least cost. And then the ankle monitors, if they are placed on
Okay. Thanks, Shan. Uh let's see, our county attorney, Stephen, has his hand raised. I'll go to him next, then uh go around the room. Stephen?
So for just to add some additional uh additional background to this, pretrial services really extend the ability for the for law enforcement, the judge, and everybody else to sorry, I'm hey. Base, I'm sorry, if you could pass me for a moment.
Um so I go ahead and ask a question. Do you anticipate, I mean, what what happens next year? Are we gonna pick up the full cost of this position?
Essentially, there's no more grant funding. That's that's the idea of it. They said there might be money, there might not be. So they're using this, this is Utah bail to so they're using all the money that the state is people
But longer term, this is increasing the payroll.
But you did mention that you might have a reduction in its other expenses.
Well, that's the idea behind it, right? Is I don't like one-time grants. I don't in this case, the idea is to growing as a county anyways, but actually I have to ask for extra stuff. Uh this hopefully would alleviate the overtime costs, uh burnout, um and other things, and then hopefully reduce our jail population, which reduces my numbers.
Right.
Um and so that's the hope, but then also there's, we can charge fees for this. So in other words, if somebody comes on and they get an ankle monitor, we have to provide that monitoring. So the judges can order fees by law. They can order a fee that they have, or they have to pay a fee to the county for this, like the twenty percent for that fee by program. Uh they have to pay those fees instead, so people have to just get on that, that fee schedule, just grants. It's good. It's not gonna be a lot of money. It's it's not a rich and it's broken. Yeah, but it's really gonna be up to the judges and the 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 pretrial services officers. Judges decide how this monitor, because a lot of these individuals may be on the monitor. It could be a sentence. Hey, you have to work next week, or hey, you have this. There is gonna be that tracking aspect, because it just depends on their past crimes.
Okay, let me uh let me go back to Stephen. It looks like he was gonna finish his thought, and then I'll go to Bill.
So realistically, um this is this is not necessarily a problem I create, but I'm I'm the person that's really advocating for people to remain um incarcerated or not when they're on, uh essentially when they're before the court and seeking seeking bail. Right now, we do not have um, not because of anything that we've done, we just don't have the services to be able to monitor people outside the jail. And so what that means is there are individuals that need supervision. They need to be an ability to check in, and they just, we just don't have those resources in this community. In bigger areas, you might have AMP um or some other private probation service provider that'd be able to help. We don't have that. Uh this is something that helps people stay crime-free. They check in with a pro with this uh pretrial service officer or deputy. It's really worth the county's time, effort, and money because without something like this, I have to tell the judge, I can't trust this person. Maybe they're on their second or third DUI, or maybe there's a domestic violence case. I just have to say, Your Honor, we just don't have the services, and I uh and I request incarceration. Or alternatively, we let them out and we tell them not to do particular things. And if they go and do it, we don't necessarily have somebody that would be following up with them to ensure that they're being they're more responsive. So this is this is well worth the money. It is well worth the effort behind it. Um it'll make make Shan my life easier, and it'll be more consistent. It'll make the community safe. And I know people think that this community is very safe. There are many, many cases in this area. There's a lot of domestic violence. There is a lot of crime that happens in this community. Um folks that don't realize that are very blessed and very fortunate, uh but there's a lot of crime. And Shan can tell you based on his jail staff, and I can tell you based on the criminal case filings that we do every year. Uh it's just something to spend money on because it's it's well worth the money, and I can't support enough.
Thanks, Stephen. Let me uh go back to Bill. You had your hand up first.
I move to approve the pretrial service grant application.
Great. Mike, seconds. Uh Trish, do you have a comment? Okay. Okay, yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Uh just, I mean, this has been my short tenure on the Justice League. Uh this has been, I mean, number one hope, uh or number one ask, so.
Well, I have both judges are very much in favor of this. I did reach out to both judges to see what they would actually program-wise. And like I said, the main the main thing is people being up the track, because they don't release people Yeah, both judges are very much in favor.
And to piggyback on that, uh the current information out there is Utah and UAC uh both hope and foresee continued funding for this. I know this is a one-time ask, but they are trying.
Yeah, when I was at the sheriff's meeting the other day, a couple weeks ago, they they did mention that, that they are gonna try and see. There's no guarantees. So the idea is, like I said, the reason why I'm applying towards it, and it's just a song. Essentially, to get the program started, at least we get the one-year cost covered, the future cost covered. It's very rare that you could ever see a grant, a long-term grant, every
Yeah.
basic funding that comes up very quick. Certain programs, it's very rare to see.
Okay, any other comment?
I would just kind of underscore again that, you know, um I also am hesitant for a one-time grant to just cover wages and et cetera, but this does include some hardware. And I think that it's important to recognize it's not just for the court system, but it's for individuals that find themselves in the court system, that they're not just sitting in purgatory waiting for government bureaucracy to grind through and get them a time in front of the judge, so. Um which is very, it does serve folks who find themselves on the other side of the bars, and so.
Because that's that's one thing, is a lot of people, I mean, I could say a lot of people just make mistakes, and then they end up getting stuck in jail because they they're just right at that point. I've never done anything wrong, but they're at that point where it's just they can't release you without some kind of pretrial services or tracking And so a lot of these individuals sit in jail for months and months and just waiting for assistance because they can't afford to get out.
Yeah.
Stuff like that. So this gives the judges and the attorneys more options to try and get some of these individuals out. And then those that do get out, like Stephen said, it's also a public safety thing. So that way they're tracked, they're monitored, and those that need to be supervised are supervised, but it's not to the extent of being incarcerated.
Right.
The ones that are staying in jail at that point are the ones that need to be in jail.
All right, uh Bill made the original motion and Mike seconded it, so I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And that passed unanimously. Thanks, Shan. All right, um we will move on to agenda item six, federal. Yes. Ah, good, good catch. It's exactly six o'clock. So we will move on to our second citizens-to-be-heard session, which we always have at six o'clock. Uh looks like everyone here in the chambers is is working, so yeah. Let's go to Zoom. Is there any citizen on Zoom who is here to make a comment? If so, uh use the hand raise symbol or just unmute your mic and introduce yourself. Okay. So it looks like we don't have any citizens to be heard at six. Let's move on to agenda item six, federal lands access program, uh known by the acronym FLAPP grant projects, and presenting are Dan Stenta, who is our county engineer, and Bill Jackson, who uh heads our roads department. So I will turn it over to Dan and Bill.
Hello, I think Bill is going to join us.
Yes, I'm here.
Great, thanks, Bill.
Um this is kind of Bill's um purview. This is his wheelhouse, this application, so I'm gonna let him um take the lead and get started, and then I can fill in any details.
Sure.
As requested.
All right, yeah, thanks for allowing us to speak. Uh I actually prefer to be there in person, but just feeling a bit under the weather today, so. But as you all are pretty familiar with the FLAPP program uh and these applications, uh you know, we we put in two for this particular application for the sand flats and come really close, so that the decision committee seems in the federal highways, folks seem to really like the project. There were some on the last application. Um but, you know, there's been uh, you know, some uh different opinions and things of na- that nature and different things come up. And so last meeting, uh to make a long story short, you ask uh myself and Dan, I believe, to come up with a short list of projects and and to submit those, and and we did that, and I I I gotta say this quickly. I did a kind of a rough draft and sent it over to Dan and and uh he worked on it and polished it up pretty good, so that's kind of what he we sent out to you is, and so Dan's kind of backing off of that a little bit, but the truth is, he he put some work into this, and I appreciate that. So on the agenda, you see the see the projects, the shortlist. There's other projects that we looked at too, but this is the shortlist and um sand flats and uh Castleton Road, Kane Creek Road. Um I did notice here on the on the agenda, there's not much information like there is on these other uh projects, not much on the sand flats road as far as like uh maybe distance-wise and and things of that nature, and we can talk about that if you want to. And then, of course, Spanish Valley Drive, uh the multipurpose pathway and and that. But uh I think you all had a possibility, uh chance to uh read up the ru- read the write-up that Dan sent out and and kind of a you know, pros and cons maybe of each project and and and, you know, how what how it might fit in with the FLAPP program. And I just want to say this before we move on to that, because that's, to me, that's where we need to head to, but my number one goal for any of these projects that I've tried to do over the years is number one is safety. If you can look at that objectively on each one of these projects, safety and number two, benefit to the local people and our visitors. Number three, likelihood of the decision committee uh, you know, liking the project and being able to to fund this A project. And uh maybe even number four, a project that maybe can be phased, because we got to remember that the the these opportunities for this FLAPP grant only comes around once every five years, you know, so. And Utah only is getting, I think, twelve million eight hundred dollars to disperse out to several projects. Um so if we can phase a project, and that's that's a good thing, and that's kind of where the Kane Creek And that's kind of where the Kane Creek project on our agenda summary, I wa- I would add a few things to that, just for general knowledge, maybe. Maybe that uh, that project looks like from Fifth West to uh, to maybe the Moonflower Canyon. Uh, just around the portal and into the canyon there, or, or to the Moab, Moab uh, Rim Trailhead. Uh, as phase one, and then maybe, maybe from there, the fifteen-foot culvert at the end of the uh, oil. Uh, and then maybe up to, to the Amisaback Trailhead is phase two, something like that, you know? So in. Just something to consider. Um, as we contemplate these uh, projects. And Dan, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Um. Not really, um. You know, Bill, like you said, he tried to focus on things that were safety and also would have the most utility. We did bat around some ideas on some other projects like. You know, that would, would definitely qualify under the program, like the, the road up to Fisher Towers Trailhead or. Um, the road out to Mill Canyon, dinosaur tracks or something, but. Um, Bill wanted to focus on ones that would serve the most number of people, um, which I totally think is a, is a good priority to do. So we did, did look at, bat around a few other ideas, um, but these were the ones that, that seemed to be the most logical. We did talk to um, a gentleman from Central Federal Lands Highways, who's. Uh, the Utah. Representative for this FLAP program. He's not from Utah, I should say, he's been assigned the area of Utah for this FLAP program. Um. He was not real hip on the multi-use pathway being um, something that really fit their. Their criteria, he was saying, you know, how, how are you going to demonstrate or prove to the selection committee that. The majority of the trail users are accessing federal lands and they're not just, you know, accessing the adjacent properties along there. Um. So based on that feedback, I think. You know, we'd have a tough case to make with that one, but if that's what. The commission, you know, wants to put forward, um, certainly you're prerogative.
All right, uh, let's see, Kevin.
Um, yeah, I just a question, I, I just want to make sure I'm reading the, the emails and. Support correctly, so on the Loop Road, various segments of road improvements have already received FLAP funding there, is that?
Yeah, so the current project that's happening, it's at San Juan County, the last two have been San Juan County applications. But they've been on, you know, there was the area right at, by Mill Canyon, that was actually, I think, a grand county one. Was it Bill or was that San Juan County?
Well, yeah, it was near, near um, uh, Warner Lake Turnoff and headed north uh, to the Loop Road pro- to the. Castleton Road intersection is what the, what that. But we also covered a piece of the San Juan, San Juan County, it was a co-applicant, and they did from Warner down to. Down through Horse Canyon, and that's where they're picking that, the, this year's project up, right there at Horse Canyon.
So is it reasonable to conclude then that since, you know, the FLAP decision makers have already. Given the thumbs up for funding certain parts of Loop Road, the prospects for getting them to fund another segment would be pretty good, is that?
Yeah, that's what's the case I was trying to make, and yeah, I think that's, that's a good. Good assumption to make, they've supported. Three different FLAP applications, at least maybe four, cause was that the culvert crossing at Mill Creek, right by the. The Warner Lake Turnoff, wasn't that a FLAP project too, Bill? Was before?
Yes, the bridge.
Yeah, the bridge.
I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I think it was, yes. That was just right on when I come on board uh, for this position. Also, I, I just want to say that. Part of that grand county part of the, 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 the FLAP project did go down through Castleton. It's kind of hard to tell you where it was, but it's at that cattle guard. And so, you know, if we was to look at doing some work on Castleton Road and uh. That's probably where that, that extent would be from the one twenty-eight turnoff up to that Castleton resident area. Um.
Peace Hill, basically?
Pardon me?
Uh, like just Pace Hill, like get it going, going up from the highway towards?
Yeah, go on, going up Pace Hill and then, and then all the way up to Castleton Town.
Yeah. Uh, let's see, let me go around the room, Bill, I think you had your hand up uh, first, I saw, and then go to.
So what kind of money are we talking that's available from this grant? You're talking about doing some of these in phases and. It, it would seem like we would want to go for one of them that has the most likelihood to be covered in this grant. You said twelve million for the state of Utah, are we gonna be getting a micro portion of that, or is that? If we were awarded, we would be looking at that twelve million, because some of these projects are fairly substantial and to. Try and phase the sand flats or even. The Castleton Road Highway. I guess I'm curious what kind of money we're talking here, Bill or Dan?
I, I suspect, uh. Depending on the, the scope of the work on any of these projects, you. Except for maybe the Spanish Valley Drive uh, project, you could probably hit the twelve million pretty easy. But I think you, I think you can scope them down, you know, the scope of work down. Uh, on some of them to, and, and get them into the, the eight to ten million dollar range. Except for maybe sand flats around that portal area, that's a high dollar. Uh. Project to do.
So, so are we?
Kane Creek, I'm sorry.
Kane Creek around the portal area, right?
Yes.
Are we thinking we would get that entire twelve million available to the state of Utah? Or are we thinking that we're gonna just get a portion of that?
Likely not the whole amount, no.
Yeah, so the, the cycle, like Bill said, is, is four to five years nominally, it goes with the transportation bill reauthorization on the federal level. So the allocation that Utah has gotten. In the past years is, is twelve point eight million per year for that five-year cycle, so roughly over the program life, sixty million dollars. Um, the decision committee definitely likes to have more than one project per year. So they like varied amounts, like if there's some smaller type projects that they can fund. And other parts of the state, um, together with like a phase of a bigger project. So the, the, the project sweet spot, according to their, the, the, the people behind the scenes and price tag. Is somewhere at the, you know, million dollar on the low end to twenty million dollars on the high end. Once you get above twenty million dollars, you're taking, you know, half of. The state's funding for one single project over that five-year cycle and, and they. They don't like to put all their eggs in one basket like that, they like to spread the wealth a little bit. So, you know. Something less than a million dollars, they're not as supportive of, and if it's gonna be more than, say. Ten, they want you to show them how it can be phased so that they can do it over multiple years.
Okay, let me go to Mike.
Uh, thanks, Dan, for uh. Interpreting the mood on the Spanish Valley Drive uh, multi-use pathway. Uh, it would be my top choice. Uh, but I don't want to dedicate work to something that we, we won't get and. Uh, I mean, I love that project, I want to get it done, but I don't want to work now to not get money. Uh, Sand Flats Road, uh, Mill Creek Drive to Porcupine Rim Trailhead. Uh, did that, uh, in the grant application, did that actually include? An off uh, trail path or an off-road path with that, or are we talking the road only?
It would be an off-road path too. Um, in fact, the first phase would probably be. From just up to the booth and trying to figure out a route um, for a detached pathway. Um, that might follow the utility easement, you know, where they ran the utilities up to Lions Back, that would be a logical. Uh, route up the steep cut portion rather than widening that cut. Um, definitely the, the first stretch from, from right at the intersection there by the cemetery. Um, up past Recycle Center is very tricky from a right-of-way standpoint, there's not a lot of. Property there to, to get, we would definitely need to acquire some right-of-way um, on the south side of the road. Cause I don't think we can get it from the cemetery.
I unders- I understand that, uh, but I see that one, going back to the safety aspect, uh, alleviate or alleviating a lot of. Like different user groups conflicts, uh. I mean. Spanish Valley Drive pathway here, but Sand Flats Road alleviating that is uh, quite a push. At least in my mind.
Uh, Mary?
I agree with Mike, when I first looked at this, I definitely wanted the Spanish Valley. Yeah, I mean, it was like, yes, there's no, no question right there, but. Also, we haven't been successful getting the grant in the past. Uh, so my, I guess my preference would be uh, the Castleton Road, just because we, I don't think we would be dealing with as many easement issues. And there's not the contra- there is mixed feelings on the sand flat road. I mean, it's not a, it's not a total buy-in by the community. And so I think we, I think because of that, I think our best chance of getting the money would be with the highway. Uh, Castleton Road.
Pace Hill, yeah. Uh, Kevin?
Um, yeah, I, I guess I had sim- similar thoughts, um, I, I, I like the Spanish Valley pathway, but. Based on what I've heard, this doesn't sound like a, you know, good match with this grant for that, um. I, I think we've applied for this grant in the past and not gotten it, and so that makes me want to apply for something that seems like. Better, has a better chance of success and the fact that they've already on multiple occasions funded parts of the Loop Road. It just seems logical to continue that work, um. I think also, you know, in contrast to Kane Creek or the Sand Flats. I don't think there's like these. Big engineering challenges along that, you know, there's, it's just more. Routine road, road work, and so it could be, you know, phased easily to fit whatever budget, you know, we think is ideal, and there's not some. Something there like the portal or like the, you know, Dave's Crack that would. Be pretty, you know, pretty difficult to undertake, so I guess my, my feeling is if, if that road does indeed need work. I've been there recently, um, that, it just seems like a good fit, that we, we have, would have a better chance of getting the money. So.
Uh, Trish?
I, I would agree, I mean, my, my hope would be the Spanish Valley Multi-Use Pathway, um, but Dan and Bill, if you, if you guys. Tell us that that's probably not the best place to pu- put our eggs, then we should move on, and I would agree, I think Castleton is a, is an easier. Um, fix, and I also want to state that, you know, I've been visiting that community a lot lately and, and they definitely feel left out. Like I think this would be a great, um, you know. Just gesture by the county to, to make them a priority. So that would be my preference too, like Castleton.
Okay, uh, let me, let me go back to Bill here to send it.
I, I would agree that I think moving towards the Castleton Road is a good idea. I will remind folks, regardless of the controversy you feel that is in this community, that we did approve the Sand Flats Road. In this commission once before.
We didn't get the race grant.
I, I'm aware of that, but I, I do know that there's room to work on that Sand Flats Road and that first section of the hill makes a lot of sense to me, regardless of the. Obstacles that are there, at some point, we're gonna have to tackle that, whether it. Continues all the way up to the portion that has everybody up in arms is another thing, but that, that's a huge issue going up that hill and it will continue to be so. So I, I'm willing to work on that Castleton Road also.
Yeah. I, I also would, uh, I mean, Spanish Valley's pathway is dear to my heart, and it's something we've been working on for a long time, and I would love to see that go through, uh. I think it's unfortunate that that doesn't fall within the scope, or it's not thought that that falls within the scope of this, but that would be my preference, um. So the, the sand flats is it, so when you say all the way up to Porcupine Rim Trailhead, that, I mean, that's a, that's. Like the race grant, what was, that was like forty million or something, right, together, or?
Thirty, I think.
Okay, so that, but so it's a.
Yeah, I mean, we might need to scale it back to just like Dave's Crack or something.
Yeah, just, right.
Did the race include below the booth?
No, it didn't, but I think.
Booth to Porcupine.
That was oversight.
Yeah. I think that there's, uh, you know, as there's development happening up there, I can kind of see that as a need.
Yeah. I, I agree, I think it is, that is a challenge getting up that hill, and it's something that I ride my bike up that hill all the time, at least once a week, sometimes more, and. That's an issue, and then, and also, I think, I think the dirt section through the campground up to the crack is, is definitely become a problem with, with people, especially with. UTV speeding and everyone, dust is, is getting super bad on that, but um. But also as far as, uh, as far as just being able to, to procure the grant, I, I definitely agree that, that Castle Valley could, could. Go, so I think I'd, I'd probably. Go in that direction myself too.
How much money? Right, that's gonna be my question. So if we went for the Castleton on this, on this motion, it asks for the project and then a project budget amount, so.
Is that something that you're prepared to answer, Dan, for, or, or Bill, the, so the, so the, if we did, it sounds like the commission's kind of leaning towards Castle Valley, so. But we need to plug in a, an amount, right?
In a proximate amount.
Okay.
You know, so, uh, I don't know why we couldn't just uh, throw in the twelve million eight hundred thousand and. And work down.
Yeah, so I.
Didn't we talk about eight, like six to eight million, Bill?
Yeah, but why, why, why go home, go big or go home down?
Oh, I see what you're saying, ask for, ask for more and then scale it down, yeah, yeah.
And then scale it down.
I'll, I'll try to, I, I, yeah, go ahead, Kevin.
I moved, I moved as the commission direct staff to prepare a twenty twenty-four FLAP grant request for the following project. Um, you know, Castleton Road as described, with, with an approximate project budget not to exceed, um, twelve point eight million dollars.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Um, all right, I have a motion on the table, uh, to, to. Point us in the direction of the uh, the Castleton Road at a rate of twelve point eight, the, so basically the whole amount of the FLAP grant that's available to the state. Uh, motion was made by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Hedin. Um, any other further discussion on this?
I just wanted to clarify, when I said not to exceed, I meant that would give, like if staff decides it'd be smarter to apply for an eight million dollar grant.
Perfect, right, flexibility, yeah.
Yes, that's, that's what I meant as well.
Okay, all right, thanks, Bill. That's, appreciate it, all right, so.
So, so quickly, I guess you guys didn't vote yet, did you? Sorry.
No, not yet.
Yeah, no, go, go.
Say next steps.
Yeah.
Um, next steps would be, we need to get the endorsement of the Federal Land Management Agency, if it's the Castleton Road, the Forest Service would be the, would. We'd probably get one from both BLM and Forest Service, but the Forest Service would carry more weight in that case. Um. And. I believe that it comes back to you to, well, no, there's no, there's not a match commitment anymore. That's gone away this cycle, so. So I don't know that it comes back to you to commit to a, it used to be a seven percent match, right, Bill, or six point seven or something?
Close to seven, six point six six.
But we don't need a match. Okay. All right, great. Thanks, so I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of the motions.
For the folks that aren't seeing the project scopes of this one, this did, does. Uh, in the outline include a designated trailhead parking facility in the Castleton area.
Right.
Of the, um, and so. I'm in favor of that as well, so don't, don't put that on the cutting block yet.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? And the motion passes unanimously. Thanks so much, Bill.
Thank you, guys.
And Dan's with us.
Thank you all.
Dan's here for the next one, and uh, Kevin, I think I'm gonna turn this next one over to you, you're gonna take a quick break, so we're at number seven.
Yeah.
Stan? Yep. Take it away, Dan.
This is the one that's.
It's for Winter Village.
Accepting subdivision improvements for Wingate Village PUD.
Sorry, I was muted, um. Yeah, so this is, um. Wingate Village is, I did a pretty good write-up there, Wingate Village has had their improvements in for quite some time. Um, our subdivision improvements process requires first a bond to guarantee that they get built, and then a one-year warranty period after they're all built. This is closing out the one-year warranty period. They didn't actually, for some reason, it fell through the cracks, um, at the time. They didn't actually, for some reason, it fell through the cracks, um, at the time. And I don't know why, but they didn't actually post a warranty bond. I don't know if they got a waiver from it or something. So there is no bond to release as of this point. But why I did want to bring this to you is that we are accepting formally maintenance of the roads within that development now. So as of, you know, we're saying we take those roads on officially for maintenance. That's, that's basically what this action is.
Good. Thank you. Not to jump ahead here, but I move to approve the attached resolution accepting the completion of the subdivision improvements for Wingate Village PUD and releasing subdivider of further obligations under the SIA.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Mike, seconded by Trish. Further discussion? I'll call for a vote. All in favor? That passes unanimously. Six, six, nine. Absent, absent. Uh, next agenda item, this is the plat amendment. That's it, Saul? Take it away.
Hello, everyone. Uh, I see that the applicant is online if you want to ask the applicant any questions. So I'll just give a quick rundown. This is a pretty basic plat amendment for Desert Soul that was approved as sandstone cottages. And my understanding is that basically they had to do some amendments to some of the property lines because they switched from garages for some of the units to carports. So they developed some, uh, parking areas as common areas as well. So they have their own parcels. So that's the main change from the approved plat to this amended plat. So, uh, I'm here for any questions and, and so is the applicant. We can, I have things to pull up that can be seen, but that's the basic reasons for the plat amendment.
So the number of lots has not changed?
Correct. The number of dwelling units has not changed.
Well, I can remember, I think at least six plat amendments from this project. So I wish I had a precise count. So this is full of nostalgic value. But I know it's, it's, it's actually broken ground. So that's cool.
Yes.
I'm gonna make a motion. Um, I move to approve the fi- findings of facts set forth in the staff report dated September sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. And the proposed res- resolution approving plat amendment for Desert Soul Amendment One.
Okay.
Very fast, Rick.
Quinn, you're taking notes. You got it. Okay. Um, any further discussion? I'll call for a vote. All in favor? I'll abstain since I wasn't here. That's a six, six, zero with Commissioner Hadler abstaining. Confused. Have further discussion?
And, and Michael was the, is the, is he the developer? Oh, is he here?
Oh, sorry, Rick.
Okay, Rick. Okay.
Rick, you can say every word that you want to distribute.
Yeah, thank you for coming, Rick. Sorry to make you wait that long.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys. I appreciate you, Dan. Thanks for all your help.
Yep, take it easy.
Okay, uh, and so now we're on to agenda item nine, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, uh, item nine, uh, lease for Lions Back Resort to advertise its products digitally on screen in the terminal for, at, uh, KALAN's Airport. And I'll turn this over to Tammy Howland, who is the airport director.
Uh, thanks. Um, this, um, item, I was approached by Lions Back Resort, um, got, um, probably, probably over a year ago. And they expressed, um, interest in, um, purchasing advertising space in the, in the terminal. Um, and at the time, we had a, a fee in place, but the equipment, um, that we have is not, and it's not, um, the appropriate equipment, um, and they offered to, uh, put their equipment in um, for the space. And, um, what the airport board has decided is to, um, let them go ahead and advertise until we can, um, get our permanent equipment in place. Um, with a, a maximum term of one year. And, um, we should hopefully in a couple of months also have advertising policies in place. Uh, but most of what's in that policy is in there in this lease. So, um, we're covered and this, uh, contract has been reviewed by legal and, um, approved from that standpoint. And, um, this will be a, a revenue generating, um, item for us. Uh, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks, thanks, Tammy. Uh, Mike? Uh, how many monitors? Uh, twenty dollars per week or sixty dollars per month per monitor? Uh, I don't see a count on the monitors.
Uh, sorry, the, they're putting, they're gonna put two monitors, uh, one in the general, uh, terminal area and then one back in the secured area.
Okay.
Kevin? And, uh, in this first year, will they have exclusive rights to that? Or will other entities be able to advertise on those monitors?
On their screens, it will just, um, be them. They will not be able to lease that out to anyone else, um, until we can get a common, um, advertising system put into place.
I, uh, I recognize that there's nothing in place now, but I think that in the future, after this year expires, um, it'd be nice to have more ads per monitor than just more monitors.
Absolutely. Um, that's, and that's what I'm, um, hoping to accomplish with our, our twenty twenty-five budgets. Um, is to find a system and, and maybe get some funding to get that, um, put into place.
Great, thanks, Tammy. Uh, Mary?
Uh, I guess my concern is by only having one advertiser, it almost looks like the county is, is saying, well, this is the product we're endorsing. You know, if we had a lot of, you know, and that kind, it makes me a little uncomfortable. You know, I, I don't know, and I know it'd be for only a year, but still that, that was a fairly controversial, uh, very controversial, uh, development. And I don't know, I, I just don't know the optics of having something that would look like this is the that we're, you know, I, I don't think I'm making myself very clear.
You don't? Pretty good. Okay.
But, yeah, I, I think you're clear, Mary. Um, and, and I, I, and that was part of the, the discussion and debate with airport board as well. Um, and, you know, up until this point, um, we've had no interest from, you know, no one has approached me interested in, um, uh, advertising in the terminal. Uh, so, you know, I, it's ultimately up to this, this commission to decide and, and I respect that, that opinion. Um,
Thanks, Tammy. I'm gonna go to, uh, I'm gonna go to Mike real quick. Uh, in this, uh, I'm guessing type lease, uh, or a little advertising ability, yeah, lease. Uh, do we, upon getting our own equipment, have the ability to change that or we get our own equipment? Can we replace their equipment?
Absolutely.
Your scope or do we have to hold them for an entire year?
No, um, the way the, the, the lease is written is, is we can, uh, terminate at any time. And that is the intent is, is once we get our equipment in place, um, they'll take their equipment out and we'll have the, the community equipment, um, in place.
Thanks, thanks, Tammy. Bill?
Yeah, the Lions Back has had an agreement to advertise out at the airport for a long time. The board got involved and they are in the process of not only our own equipment, but putting together an advertising with a, some company that comes in and sets up the, the monitors and how many seconds go per right, per advertiser. But currently the Lions Back is the only one. They were given permission. Then permission was taken away and the board decided to allow them to advertise until the board gets finalized with a company to come in and take that over. So they, they've been on the hook. They've been told they could advertise, then they were told they couldn't advertise. And so it's been pretty convoluted, but the board went over this to a large extent. And to the point that they also put out a letter to the Lions Back apologizing for the fact that they were kind of on a yo-yo over this and that it was going back and forth. So that's just some of the context behind it.
Thanks, Bill. Mary?
Quick question. Is this, uh, you, you might prob- both of you probably have the answer. Is this gonna help, financially help the airport? Is this going to boost, uh, you know, cause I know that's something we're always looking for is ways to boost.
Looks, looks like he, yeah.
Yeah, it, it is a revenue, but it's a minimal revenue, obviously. Um, you know, sixty dollars a month. Uh, you know, and we can, we can look at adjusting those fees as well in the future.
So a hundred, so basically a hundred and twenty bucks a month? Sixty per monitor?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sure whenever this third party gets involved, they're gonna charge at least that much.
Right.
So, so we might wanna look at RPs to them, not, not to Lions Back, but to the, the next guys to insert monitors.
Uh, Kevin? Just my, my two cents worth as someone who visit airports a lot. I, I don't like the visual distraction. So if this were a ton of money, then maybe it's worth it, but I would prefer to forego a hundred and twenty dollars a month and just, you know, stick with old fashioned, still advertising. It's not the modern way, but.
I very much understand Kevin's point, but the future plans, uh, of sixty dollars per month, as to just running quick estimates, you put ten ads on there flashing throughout the day. That, that number is an exponential growth there. I mean, it is. It's a more and more income. We could do more than just one advertiser or publish to one advertiser that we, uh, that have that. But I understand the, the moving, uh, visual aspect. Steven?
Just, just a note for the commissioners. I think the, the nice thing about the contract and, and Tammy and Tara have done a great job. They've lined out the policies restrictions on certain types of advertising that we don't wanna see, like the new Saw movie fifty thousand, whatever. Uh, or, or political ads or, uh, sexualized ads or things like that. There is some limitation. Now, while we hope that people abide by that, there is going to like the recent policing. And so just remember that technology is great, but it's just following through. And I, I don't have any, uh, fear that Tammy and Tara can't do that. But that's one of the headaches that we have once we start doing advertising. Just wanted to know that.
So I, I just had a quick question. Is there gonna be sound involved or is it just visual?
No sound, just visual.
Okay, that's cool. Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, I move to approve the lease for the Lions Back Resort to advertise digitally at the airport terminal.
Okay. Second from Mike. All right. Further comment, Evan?
I was just gonna say it'd be great if they could show some of our, uh, visit Moab, discover Moab, uh, videos in between their ads, but I know that's a late addition to add at this point, but you could mention it to them.
If you wanna add, if, if you wanted to add it in the contract, you could make it as one of the caveats that you want.
See that's in.
Yeah. But we're expecting this contract to just be in effect for a short time and then the airport will have a signed equipment.
Yeah, right.
Well, sometimes out of all the priorities in life, maybe this one.
I think.
Yeah, we're, we're very close on the, the policies. And then, like I said, um, I'm putting together, um, proposals so that we can budget for the equipment in twenty-five.
Thanks. Great. I think I'm, I think I'm okay with it personally. Any other comment? All right. I'll call for a vote. Let's see. Bill made the motion to approve. Mike seconded it. All those in favor? Raise your hands. All opposed.
Just wanted to know we're not totally comfortable, you know, just, just learn.
Okay, so the motion, motion passes. Motion passes four to three with Commissioners Walker, uh, Hadeen and, um, McGann in opposition. Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item ten, USU contract amendment. And this one goes to our county attorney, Stephen Starks.
So for the commissioners' recollection, this was the, uh, throwback that we originally had for the USU contract for the S, SBDC, uh, amount of funds that was provided. This would be an additional sum of money that we're adding to ensure that that position was going to be a fuller three-year period. Uh, we met with Commissioners Winfield and Hadler on this, talked with them. They asked that we, uh, if we could provide a little bit of additional funding to round it out to three years. Uh, the difficulty was they had false start or a short start with the position previously. This amount of money would, um, allow it to be a, a full complete three years. Not necessary. I don't, I don't have a, a dog in the hunt. Um, but this is just what they would like to see and that's up for consideration.
So Stephen, on the contract, so this contract ends June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, is that correct? Or are we?
It should be, the original, I think, was supposed to end, but we, we want to extend it out for three years.
Okay, from the inception.
And this, these amount of funds are coming out of the general fund, whereas the previous funds that were allocated for, were coming out of your diversification funds. So it's coming out of pocket. Again, we can't utilize the other previous funds, diversification funds, because that provision sunset. Uh, again, this was something that was brought up of, of, uh, interest for individuals, for individual commissioners. And, uh, they said they wanna hire somebody. They also uh, pitched that they'd be happy to have somebody sit on the hiring committee from the county. Uh, we mentioned that previously. I, I don't have more, uh, too much more information. Uh, the one, the kind of concerns that we've had in the past have been the kind of the false start and the amount of time that it took for them to get started again. Uh, the opposite side of it is when we had, uh, people in the position, it was very sought-after position. People enjoyed, I think the last, uh, consistent person that was there was Beth McHugh.
That's the last consistent person, right?
And that's, I, I mean, it has the possibility of being a great, um, great opportunity, but the management is almost the, the question. So like I said, I don't have a dog in the fight.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Bill?
Yeah, the, the background on it also is that by dropping it previously and allowing this to start back up, the director himself at USU, and I forget.
That's, that's a fair point. Yeah.
He is now overseeing the hiring of this position once we approve this extension rather than it just being some staff member or whatever. So it's, it now has, is it Michael Finerty?
Director of USU Blanding is Christian. I can't remember his last name.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a director of one of the good parts.
And I can add a little bit more background if I, if I could be so rude. Uh, they also did indicate that in the event that the county, uh, if the county wanted to take it back, that they would be willing to refund the amount of money that we put into the program. I don't know what nightmare that creates because they're providing back the funds. Theoretically, I think we could stick it in the revolving loan fund. I think we had a caveat for that. So they came to us and said, we're happy with either outcome. Uh, the director that took it over said he is going to be putting a lot more scrutiny on it because his name will be attached. Uh, just a little bit more information.
And it is Michael Finerty and he's the USU State Director of a small business.
Okay.
He's at the state level and he's actually overseeing it now.
Trish?
I guess the, you know, the, the issues that I've had when I was, I've, I've been housed at USU for a long time until recently is that without a, a, a director, uh, actually on campus or a dean, um, that, that position's kind of become fairly lax and that's concerning to me. I think it's a really important position. You know, I would probably be more receptive if they're actually housed somewhere where they're being supervised. Um, and that's not the case with USU Moab, the supervisors at Blanding. And so there's not really a direct supervisor there. Um, so I, I, I'm, I'm, I, I just, yeah, I'm just, I'm not real supportive of this as it sits. I think that, that it could be something and I've thrown out some other ideas which I won't throw out tonight, but, um, I'm not super supportive of this as it sits. We, we can't, yeah.
Bill?
Yeah, and I brought Trish's concerns up to the staff at USU and they're somewhat shocked and surprised that you haven't brought those up to them individually rather than in a public meeting like this. They were a little bit surprised to hear that because they don't feel that way at all. They feel like they have very good supervision up there and that they're well-run. So may, maybe it's a, a meeting that you need to have up there with them to get a little more comfortable with this.
I spend quite a bit of time at USU.
Uh, Mary?
Yeah, it's, uh, I really wanna see this program succeed. You know, I was really excited. Yeah, it's, uh, I really wanna see this program succeed. You know, I was really excited about it when we first came up with it. I do know the. Uh, board, the advisory board, somewhat over the Economic Opportunity Board, was really frustrated with, uh, USU. In fact, their, their, um, state, their. Recommendation was to, to drop it, but yet at the same time, I don't wanna drop it because I think it's such an impor- program, but since. We, there seems like we have some, uh, guardrails in place to protect us. I don't want it to happen when it's happened before, that it's just has, it's had like three false starts and it's never been the county's. It's always been something that the, uh, USU has dropped on some level, and I love USU, I'm on their advisory board, but anyway. I want, you know, I most likely will vote for this, but I, and I will vote for it because of the guardrails that you've made sure in everything that I appreciate.
Do, do you don't add some, Stephen?
Just one last point, if you, if the commissioners wanted also to identify a commissioner theoretically, they could sit on the, the hiring committee, I think, uh, Mark, is that Mark? Mike, I'm sorry, Mike was very, uh, the, the gentleman from USU was very, uh, appreciative of the offer for somebody from the county to sit on. And I, I do think it would be helpful, I don't wanna say too much, but I do think it would be really helpful to have a commissioner that was on there that was in, that, that knew a bit about that area so that. Uh, we could protect the interests of the county because we're funding this position.
Sure. Uh, Trish?
So you mentioned that we'd have to carve it out of the general fund.
The twenty, the, the twenty thousand.
Just the twenty, okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, the, the remaining is the.
Got it.
It's that big award that we have that they only use that, I think they were there for three months or four.
It was very short.
Kevin? Yeah, I guess I, pardon my ignorance, um, so hoping everyone else would just agree and make a recommendation.
Sorry.
Um. Is it, is this, um, economic diversification funds via two?
Orig- originally, yes. So originally, and the only reason why we're giving this additional piece is because now they.
I, I didn't mean the twenty thousand, I meant like the, the bulk of it.
Yes, yeah, okay, that's great, that is.
I think, um, I. Yeah, it, it, it's kind of a tough call, but I, I, I'm, I'm willing to give them one more chance. I think, I think it's worth it. I think, I think the program's a good one in general, and if, if they can get their act together, I'm, I'm willing to. Put the, the twenty thousand.
When they have the right person in place, the program is amazing. It really is. I've used their services when it was Beth and it was amazing.
Yeah, no, I, I, I totally agree. So I think, I think it is, I'm, I'm, I'm up for giving them another chance and, and giving them this money to, to continue with that and then hopefully prove themselves and, and let's have a good program. Kevin?
I, I move to approve the amendment to the cooperative agreement with USU, which allows for an extension of time and additional funds to fulfill the purpose of creating S B D C.
Thanks, Trish?
I'll second that.
Okay.
And I would be happy to be on the hiring committee.
Okay. Great, um, any further discussion? All right, call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands, and they pass this unanimously. Um, great. All right, we'll move on to eleven. This is Westside Woodworks Contract Amendment, and this is also Stephen.
Just moving along with, uh, finalizing those star grants, uh, this applicant originally came to the commission for, uh, variance. Uh, they've looked at that process and instead of identifying that as expanding the ability to provide additional services. They've identified a piece of equipment that would be akin to expanding their, uh, ability to serve the community. Um, they've identified that it is sufficient, it would be sufficient amount of money to, uh, to cover what the grant would be, the spending requirements. So we've made that adjustment, we've put that in the amendment, we think that, uh, the equipment is in line with the original grant's purpose and will help the business. Uh, grow and expand its business within the terms of the star grant.
Thanks, Trish.
I'd be happy to just give a little bit more context. I did talk to Mark yesterday. I said, you're on the agenda. He's like, I didn't know. Should I come? And I said, no. I think Stephen will do a great job and I'll just add a little context. This is one of those grants that he was asking to expand his shop. He needed two foot variance on a setback. We never could come to a conclusion on that, so he, he toiled away at that process for a long time. Um, he's now shifted and just said if he can buy a piece of equipment that basically would make that facility more efficient, you know, he. It would be, it would really help him out. He's also struggling in the end with just finding, you know, staffing as everybody is, so he's like, this will replace somebody. That it'll, this, a piece of equipment will do the job of somebody and so I, I think it's a, it's a good compromise. We did, you know, have him. airing out there for a long time. I don't even know how long it did.
It was a long time, right?
Um, so I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the second amendment to Westside Woodwork contracts, which will allow for a change in the scope of the project to include equipment purchases.
Thanks, Trish. Um, looks like Bill got the second. Um, any further discussion? And Stephen, you're comfortable with it?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I think it's a great outcome. I, I honestly think it meets, we, we've gone back through some of the star grants and, and tried to find it, I think areas where it's been shifted in this.
Okay, Mike?
That was my question was, you feel like areas that we, we were able to shift with this because it, uh. I mean, we denied others, uh, upon the. Of them changing contract, but this one feels close enough.
The original, if we go into their original application, they originally asked, and it's on attachment A, I, I think their overall goal was originally to. Upside, I state. See, identified it, it as a potential, what, what the goal was is e- expansion of that, so I do think it, it says. Uh, uh, Woods, Woodshead Westford understands that growth is essentially, essential for any company and we're looking for ways to grow our operations and improve products and services. Right, I, I think that that is the statement they make in item nine of exhibit A. I think that sufficiently falls within the grant and the, the goals that the commission set forth in this.
Yeah, and I, that's, that's, that's in line with my memory of, of having worked on these grants also, for sure, this particular one, so, so good, okay. Um, any other comment before I call for a vote? All right, uh, let's see, Trish made the motion and Bill seconded it. All those in favor of approving, raise your hands, and they passed it six to nothing with Commissioner McGann absent. Awesome, all right, moving along to number twelve, special events intent to apply submissions for quarter two, twenty twenty five. And, uh, since we don't have a special events coordinator currently, Alicia is taking this one. So quarter two is April, May, June.
Yes.
Awesome.
There are not very many intended to apply submissions. Look at tonight, there's only four. That's because several of them were approved later or earlier, I should say. So that's why I included the list of all of the events that are approved so far through this quarter and then another list that's through the end of the year, just so you have a full picture of exactly what's going. Um. So. The first one is the Amalosa Trail Race. That's with Mad Libs Events. It's a running event on April twelfth, um, there's fifteen, about three hundred people. They've been doing it for sixteen years. Um, and they do have where they have the, they've changed it a year or two ago where they have the option to pick the packets up tonight for styles, kind of mitigates impact of the trail. Ready to go. Then there's Cruz Moab, uh. It's with the Rising Sun four wheel drive club of Colorado, April twentieth to the twenty seventh, expect about six hundred people. Uh, they've been doing it for twenty six years. That's an annual event for, uh, four wheel drive Toyota vehicles enthusiasts, uh, with an expo at Osta and they hit a few of the best trails. Then there's the, this one, um, is, there's an update on this one, actually. It's for, uh, the Moab Grenadier Rally. They did actually put in a request to change those dates and I believe Mike is online if you have any questions for him, but they put in a request to change the date because. He noticed, I didn't, that, that it was gonna be running into several other events, so they wanted to switch it to May first to fourth. So that's if you decided.
Other events at theirs or other events in town?
Other events in town, just to speak their thoughts, to spread it out, because there's other motorized events happening at the same time of their original requested date, which was the fifteenth to eighteenth. And so they wanted to, you know, make sure. So they are making the request to change that from the fifteenth to eighteenth to May first to fourth. I will also add there is a potential competing event without those dates out at Osta, but they did not get their intent to apply it, but it did, so. That's, hopefully they can find some other cases.
And they wanted to use Osta?
They did wanna use Osta, yeah. The competing event wanted to use Osta, but, so it's all pending whether or not this one is approved, so, uh. I guess, Michael, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, just that the, uh, conflict was going to fall directly on the same weekend as the Overland Expo West in Flagstaff. Uh, this event draws in several, uh, of the industry vendors that would not be able to attend the Moab event. Which is the request to move that date up to the first and, first through the fourth of May.
And then there, there were a couple of other events that are happening in town, the fifteenth, eighteenth. Then the last one.
Crystals.
Crystals. It's the, yeah, Crystal Festival. It's an expo, it's the Rock, Gem and Mineral Show. I put on here one year, I know that they did previous years. And then they took a couple of years off, I think during COVID and some of that, and now it's back, so.
There was some kind of, yes.
Yeah, and maybe I might be mixing it up with a different rock show, I don't, but there was some, I should share it, yeah. There was one last year, yes.
Okay, great.
I like it. So those are the four before you for the intent applies for high impact tonight.
Awesome. Thanks, Alicia. That's less than I would have expected for a very busy time of year.
Yes, it is kind of, I mean, it's convenient for me that several of them were.
Right, already, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Anyone have any questions, uh, concerning any of these events? So the, the Grenadiers one is new, right?
Yes, it's the only new.
Yeah, what was the, how, how many were they expecting?
Uh, two hundred.
Two hundred, okay. Two hundred people and how many vehicles?
Um.
We were low impact.
They were run, walk, cycle, uh.
Yeah, Grenadiers is a, that's a SUV, yeah, it's all motorized. That's the third. Mike?
Let's just double check, is this crystal application the same as the one that was held this year? Oh, I thought there was a crystal show out at Osta this year.
There was a crystal show out at Osta, but I, I can't remember when it was. I thought it was last year, but.
Might have been last year. But, uh, it's the same.
But it was the same, yes.
Okay, cause it was very well attended from what I saw.
Yes.
Uh, by the community members and, uh, people coming in, so that was like.
It's crystals, Mike.
I, it's not my wheelhouse, but let me tell you. A lot of people loved it and it was a good event for Osta that I saw.
People love, they love gems and minerals. I lived in Tucson for a long time. When the gem and mineral show came to Tucson, it took over the whole town with people all over the world.
Not any, um, pushback anywhere. I'll make the motion to approve these.
Okay.
I move to approve the following special event. Events.
Sorry.
Intent to apply submissions and do I need to list those out? April submission.
You can say as presented.
As presented.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Second from Mike?
All right. Me, I was just gonna ask the, since we had the applicant here about, um. Uh, if they had an idea of which trails would be used.
So, yeah, absolutely, and Commissioners, thank you for, uh, uh, giving me the time to speak tonight. So I've already taken a look at what we did this year. Uh, the event we did this year was a success. Uh, we had a total of seventy five grenadiers in town. We had forty nine that took part of the trail runs. Uh, those other twenty six reported back to me that they hit town, they hit the park, they went rafting. I heard talk about skydiving. Um, it was a great success for us down there at the Osta facility, um. I apologize, Commissioner, I just, uh, spaced out there. Will you repeat your question?
So, I have a list here. Yeah, I have a list. It's got Still Vender, Hell's Revenge, Fitz and Thinks, um, Geyser Pass, Gemini Bridges, Seven Mile Route. Three D, Behind the Rocks, Cliffhanger, Shaper Trail, Boots and Towers, Chicken Corners, and Splendide Plus.
Yes.
But it does say that they'll narrow them down as it gets closer.
Yes, and I've taken a look at where, you know, what else is going on in Moab in that timeframe. We're gonna draw back from the northern trails. Uh, and put more focus towards the south. I think you're gonna have a lot of congestion to the north, uh, in the beginning of May. I've visited there many, many times. May is the time to come down and play. Uh, so we're gonna move a couple of those trails, uh, around. We actually did not end up doing Shaper this year.
Oh, well, I, in their application here, they've also got that they will review Leave No Trace, Stay On Trail and Tread Lightly Prisms. If that helps.
So you said you, did you guys just have an event here?
This last weekend, yes.
That's what I, I saw a lot of grenadiers in town. I thought maybe there's something going on. So, yeah, they look, they're just like classic Land Rovers from like, like the old Defender days. Yeah, this big, rich English guy decided to, he wanted to bring them back and bought all the tooling and, that's kinda interesting. Um, so, so this isn't the first event that they're having?
I think it's.
Yes, I'm sorry, it'll be the second event in May.
It'll be the second event, okay.
Right.
Got it. Great, thanks.
I think we're ready.
Okay, uh, any other, yeah, if no one else has anything to say, uh, let's see, Bill made a motion to approve all four events and Mike seconded it. So I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And all opposed.
Just to clarify. Just to clarify, you guys are good with the date change that they requested. To get to the first, third, fourth.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, okay, let me, I, I didn't get that. So was that a?
Uh, it was a opposition.
It was an opposition, okay. And Kevin, I, I didn't catch where you landed on that. Okay, okay, so it looks like the motion passes six to one with Commissioner Clapper in, in opposition. All right.
Yep, thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Alicia.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Commissioners.
All right, we're on to agenda item thirteen, transfer of Grand County assets in relation to possible fire department annexation and let's see, do we have a presenter on that? This, this can be a group discussion, okay, we.
So pretty, where, where we're at is we've met, we had a, a meeting with Commissioners Winfield, Walker and Hadler. Uh, we met with all of the different department heads and we're still trying to, um, figure out the simultaneous dance of. Switching midstream, making sure all of our partners are happy while meeting the criteria that the, uh. That the Forest Service Director has laid out. They've listed some concerns. They pointed to a particular statute and lay, and, and have some, some qualms about whether. Uh, the fire, the annexed fire mission would have the ability to be considered what's called a taxing authority and have, uh, wildfire responsibility. So we're still in discussions about that. I don't want to transfer, have the counties transfer assets until we make sure that they're going to annex. And so it makes the annexation and the transfer of assets have to occur, occur at the same time. One of the, one of the things that I brought up at the meeting and I'll, I'll say in a shorter, nicer version, is there, there is the concern. That if we give away all of our tools to fight fires and we end up still being responsible for fighting the fires. Uh, because of some statutory obligations that the sheriff has and that the county has, and ultimately we're responsible theoretically if, you know, the fire. Which I don't believe they're gonna do that, but if they went rogue and said, we're not gonna put out fires, well, the county's gonna be liable and we have to put out fires. So we're making sure that we have written down in the agreements, uh, agreements to the level that the. Her title is the, I think she's the director of the, it's F F, F F S, uh. Thank you, Forest Fire and State Lance Director for her to be comfortable. Her attorney at the meeting that we had expressed some concerns and so we're still working through those.
Okay, so, so this is possible?
Yes, not, we're not there.
Yeah, we just don't wanna end up in a spot where we've transferred basically the Thompson property to the fire department and then they don't annex. Yeah, like, like Stephen said, that would have to happen at the same time. Okay.
So we don't have to do anything?
No, not today, and I, I, I can't recall, I don't know if, uh, how this.
I think these were ongoing conversations and we thought this could be squared away by today, so we wanted it on the agenda, but it's not, so that makes sense.
Moab Valley Fires, in alignment with that, you've had discussions with them.
At the, at the meeting, remember, we, we talked to them and the attorney and I, 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 I don't represent the interests of the fire. And, and we kind of pointed that we, we need to have continuing discussions. Their attorney, myself, and whatever representation they're gonna have are gonna make some contracts and, and the hard thing is. What everybody wants to make sure is that the county has a stick, um, to utilize in the event that fire goes broke. That's put in, in a nice, nice way.
Right now, this is mainly regarding the Thompson.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, assets and we have. One and a half, two firefighters. I mean. This, this would be a big improvement in terms of responding. So I, I hope that the. Fire forestry, you know, that they don't have concerns that we're passing stuff over, but we're actually strengthening our fire. You guys were at the meeting, I mean, they, they did. They raised some, some concerns, but the goal is we're still intending to do this. This is on the path for, for fixing. It's on the path for. Allowing them to annex and putting in uh, the teeth there that we can.
They, they did raise concerns, but it was my understanding that when we left there that the state was. On board with what Grand County and Moab Valley Fire were doing.
I, the, the, well. I mean, it's not like we're shuttering a healthy, highly functioning operation. It's, it's. I'd be more than happy to, to throw everybody on an email chain. We can call up and touch base and, and.
It's a big conversation.
I, I am in a full support of moving the ball forward down the field and. Annexation to happen.
We wanna touchdown.
But we're not gonna do it today.
Yeah, so I, I would uh, I don't know if there's a. To postpone if this was an action item or.
No, I think we could just ignore it, right?
Okay.
Yep, that sounds, yeah, we don't need to. I think, yeah, we don't need to postpone, right? See, I could just, just, yeah, we don't need to do anything. Okay, great. Alright, so now we're on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight consists of uh, item A, meeting minutes for September seventeenth and October first. Twenty twenty-four commission meetings, ratification of payment of bills. Uh, total bills in the amount of nine hundred sixteen thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. Total payroll, the amount of three hundred ninety thousand two hundred. Eighty-nine dollars and forty cents for a combined bills of payroll in the amount of one million three hundred six thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars and eighteen cents. Uh, also, it includes the ratification of letter of support for UDOT passing lanes. Um, ratification of independent contractor agreement with the Bay Brothers Construction LLC for infrastructure improvements at a road crossing tract E. Which is funded through the uh, Community Development Block Grant, the CDBG Grant. Uh, item E on the consent agenda is ratification of the billboard lease with the Venture Management LLC. Item F, resolution. Uh, for the Manderfield subdivision final bond release. Uh, G, resolution, accepting subdivision improvements and a release of warranty bond for Rim Village Vista's Phase Six. Uh, also the volunteer appointment to the solid waste special service districts number one. The independent contractor agreement with Arch Walker Enterprises for their replacement of South Bay Rollup Door at Osta. Uh, item J, UDWQ grant application to extend healthy trails coordinator position. And what's that? Utah Division of Water Quality, I believe. Okay, thanks. And K, volunteer appointment to the Transportation Special Service District, which Mike referenced earlier. The consent agenda, Mike?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll just shorten that.
Do I have a second? Alright, so motion to approve from Commissioner uh, McCurdy, second from Commissioner Winfield. All those in favor approving the consent agenda is presented, raise your hands. And that motion passes unanimously. Alright, we are on to our discussion item and this one is the uh, discussion of the appeal of request for zoning interpretation.
So on this one, we have the uh, representative of the applicant from Kane Watch, Ms. Lorlong. Uh, we've been in discussion if she'd like to come up, she can, but uh, for today. Um, what we're looking at is we're looking at setting out a briefing schedule. Uh, to prep for all the information to be prepared for the commission. I know we've received a packet of information. Um, in an effort to try to help everybody be fully aware of what they can do. I know they're not represented. Um, so I've had a conversation with them. Um, I proposed a briefing schedule. Um, of the following, just so everybody's on the same page. If Ms. Long can correct me if I'm, if I've misstated anything. But essentially by November first, they will provide to the county their brief, all the supplemental information that they would like to. They'll provide that to the commission, uh, to Quinn, myself, and P and Z. November fifteenth, uh, P and Z will file their reply based on, you know, the justifications for the original zoning interpretation. And then uh, there'll be a reply brief for a rebuttal within one week on November twenty-second by uh, Kane Creek. Watch and then we will set it either for December third, unless we want to come on uh, Thanksgiving week, which I didn't think anybody did. Uh, but the next commission date would be December third or December seventeenth, or we can do a special setting. Whatever the commission would like to do, um, but I would suggest perhaps a date in December, or we could go the week of uh, of Thanksgiving. Those would be our, our timelines and I think those timelines work for Ms. Ms. Long and.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I, I personally, I think I'd prefer the third of December. Sounds like a good date. Any other?
I don't want to look back to the second week or that's.
It is, yes.
Yeah, so let's do the third.
And so it'll proceed um, in a standard fashion of, of a hearing. They would present, uh, P and Z would present. The commission would deliberate and decide what they. Yeah, so if the property owner would like to get involved, then they would uh, either file, uh. I want to call it an amicus brief, but they would intervene. They would file, they would, would cross that bridge.
And we're gonna notify them?
We, we can notify them that this is happening. Yes, I can, I will provide that information to them.
I thought there was an understanding that they didn't have standing to file this to begin with, so why are we considering it?
So the, the way in which our statute is written, it is very, um, it, it lacks more to be desired. And I've talked to Bart about that, uh, but essentially they're entitled to a hearing, they're entitled to a process. That process isn't necessarily perfectly laid out in our statute. There's no application fee. And so this is kind of the best that we're doing. That's why I reached out to, to Ms. Long to set up a briefing schedule. I indicated that we're gonna do the same hearing that they would come present, P and Z would present. Um, the determination that the commission will make, uh, you'll get advice from Bart and I, who will provide. Information. He will be here, um, as much as he may or may not want to help the county. We are uh, keeping him here. And so we'll be both present that day and we'll, um. Basically just in the middle to explain what the rights are. We won't be advocating for any particular outcome. We're just giving you guys what, what your options are. And you guys are going to be the ultimate decision makers. So again. Exercise caution when, when considering these topics. I, I would encourage you to limit your information to the. Information that's provided to you. I know this is obviously a topic that you're well familiar with. Um, but Bart and I will be here to answer questions if any that come up. So if you have additional questions, we can go into detail. My phone's always available.
So how would, how would it go at the meeting when we have the uh, basically the. Be like an action item or would it be like workshop before the meeting?
Um, we could either, like, time-wise, we could put it either uh, prior. It's, I'd probably want to schedule. An hour and a half or two hours.
Okay.
Uh, then that would give us ample time for the presentation. I don't envision that they would need more than thirty minutes each side. It may be fast. I don't know the, of, of the commissioners who watched the. Uh, the hearing officer one, where a lot of the information, again, I don't know if, if the watch wants to obtain an attorney or not. But essentially they come, they present their argument and most of the time attorneys are gonna focus on kind of nuanced parts within the, within their position. And, and maybe not read through every single page of their brief. Because thirty minutes should be enough, thirty, county thirty, maybe give them a little bit of rebuttal time. We can work on uh, how we want to structure that. We want fairness. That's why we're trying to set it all out and then leave a, a good chunk of time for you guys to be able to decide. I don't want the commission to feel like um, they're forced to make a decision right then. You guys can theoretically take it under advisement. Um, Mr. Kuntzen, I can help draft. Uh, your guys is finding an determination and we can talk about that.
So looking, so we'd probably be looking at a uh, something before the commission meeting.
Or special setting.
Or special setting.
Not that commissioners would like to do that.
Session.
Setting, sorry. We call, we call it, that's in, in corporate, call it special set.
And that was uh, the one you proposed, yeah, so that would happen if we're gonna do it on Tuesday, that would be the week of, what's Thanksgiving's on the twenty eighth?
So I, I assumed we'd give, so again, the briefing schedule is the first, the fifteenth, the twenty-second, then give commissioners a week to digest.
Yeah.
Pun intended, and then come back the next week. Um, either you could do it on the third, the fifth, uh.
Okay.
Uh, so I, I had a question, I guess it's about the record, um. You know, a lot of this concerns events that happened, you know, quite a few years ago, but some of the participants are still alive. Maybe the reefs we receive will include, you know, statements from some of those people. But if they don't, and we wanted to like ask key players, hey, what's your memory of this? Is that, is there room for this in this process?
Sustlante requests from the, from the commission, um, uh, theoretically, that could be something that you could request. Again, there's, we, we don't have very many. We don't have, I mean, if you made it, if you made it known, again, this process is supposed to be, we're trying to do this, it's open and transparent. That's why, you know, we didn't discuss this any, anywhere else. Sure, if, if you wanted particular things that indicated that, or like, for example, now, if you said it would be really helpful to get. Davids, it's like that, sure. They can present the information they can provide to the commission.
What, what liability or is this putting this county under this commission?
Um, we're, we're not gonna answer that question today. We're just talking procedural today. You guys are going, I, I want you guys, yes.
But we could maybe discuss that in closed session.
Sure, but again, receiving all of the information, we want, I, I want the commission to receive all of the information. And then when it comes time to make a decision, you guys don't, you, you guys don't have more information. Because it puts the applicants at a disadvantage to not know what the, what the uh, legal elements are. That's why I, I haven't answered that question. That's why we didn't talk about it. Anywhere else. So. An important question, Bart and I are gonna be happy to answer any and all questions with you guys.
And, and I, I just want to interject, yeah, I, I very much appreciate that you're, you're trying to do this all correctly. Thank you. And I don't, so if you're a nitpicky, it's just because I want to make sure the process goes well, it's not, not criticism.
No, 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 and, and that's, I, again, this is, this is why when we have something that, you know, we don't have exactly laid out. We want to make sure that people feel like they get their day in court and they get the opportunity to present and. Um, I've, I've mentioned a lot. I don't know if I've said anything that's not uh, accurate to what Ms. Long and I have, have talked about on the scheduling.
Yes, so, but that, what I was just saying was a preamble to the following, which we, I think we discussed. Earlier, like, you know, we had a, you know, personnel dispute while, and I think there were. You know, there were, there were like multiple attorneys for like different parts of the county. Sure, yeah, the, the commission was not the same as the personnel. HR department. Um, I'm wondering here, we, we had this initial determination by P and C and I think. You or maybe some of your staff was advising them and now the commission's supposed to hear an appeal. And I'm just curious about the overlap between the legal.
Yes, I, Bart and I had a conversation about this. He says he doesn't see um, any conflict of interest. I mean, we, we're going to present. Uh, the evidence, not evidence, we're gonna present the legal argument for the commission to decide. Ultimately, the commission can make the decision if they'd like. Um, I'd be happy to present.
So the, the fact that we're making a decision means it doesn't matter if the person advising P and C is the same as the person.
And you'll have, you'll have Bart as well, uh, there at the meeting and I've talked to him about that, but he, when I approached this question, he says. You know, the difficulty is the county attorney's office is always advising. Uh, you, you're always advising. He said it would just create a nightmare if every time the attorney, he said, you just have to get attorney upon attorney upon attorney. Now, certain cases where I think there's a direct conflict, like when you uh, hypothetically, if there was. So, like a, a connected item to me that I had a conflict, a fiduciary conflict, then yeah, I'd have to conflict myself off, but I. You know, I, I've, even this commission understands I don't have a particular preference on outcome. Us concerned about liability or. Or the functioning of law, uh, really is our two cents, but we don't have the ultimate decision-making power. That's the, the commission.
Good, thanks. Mike?
Well, estimated December third?
Yes.
Uh, I would like to give applicants two full hours. She said hour and a half or two full hours in, in the present. I'd like to give, it's always a better guess with more time in there. Plan for two hours.
Yeah.
That'd be.
Started to.
Set aside. Four hours, hearing. But you're saying two hours.
Or the applicants actually get two hours to argue.
Would you need two hours to throw?
You never know.
I understand.
I would say that's fair.
That we need to jump back to. One AM or. We're not starting at one AM.
I, I, again, whatever the commission wants to set for the timeline, that's, that's fine, but. Normally, they, the, the goal would be for them to put their information in the brief.
Yeah.
Um, and. You guys want to schedule it for two hours, that's, that's a long time, but, but I would. Probably recommend then you're looking at a four or five hour time block that you guys need to schedule.
Let's, uh, I don't, I don't think we need to make that decision today. Let's, we can talk about that.
But, but I will point out that I, we had these appeals of some, two different conditional use permits and then those were pretty complex things. Where both sides had attorneys, but the hearings were still well under two hours and, and that's because you just assume. People have read all the briefing and then the discussion is only about a, a small subset of them. So, sound fair, Stephen?
Yeah, I was jokingly, I was looking up the Supreme Court and you only get like twenty minutes, thirty minutes, so if the Supreme Court, they can boil it down. But it is a hearing, not just oral arguments.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so yeah, shoot for December third. Appreciate it. Thanks for all the thought that went into that. Yeah, thank you, guys.
So that's the date and then if there's any, any difficulty and just again, transparency. If there are hiccups that come along the way, uh, I, I will tell you, it's very common practice for attorneys for you to. Email in and request a slight extension. Attorneys normally give that to each other. It's a, you know, candor discretion. So if that comes up, please don't be shy and if you obtain counsel, please let us know so that we can talk to them about that. If you guys need to come report to the commission, ask for an adjustment on the scheduling, then we can do that as well.
Great, alright.
Mary?
I'll make motion that we go into closed session to discuss character, professional competence, physical talent.
And, thanks. Can we add litigation, litigation as a possible topic?
Possible litigation?
I don't know which, which topic we're on. I know, I know one because of the nature of the structure of the prosecution and other things. I can't play all of them.
I think also, I mean, I, I think something came up.
Sure, perfect.
You mentioned that you didn't want to talk about, uh, what I talked about.
Sure.
My possible litigation.
Thanks. Mike seconds, alright, motion by Mary, second by Mike. All in favor of going into closed session? And looks like that passed unanimously. Thanks.
Katie, thanks Laura.
Good night.
Love to the evening. Thanks for hanging out.